Mr. Dorch, would you lead us in the pledge? Please rise, put your hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll observe a moment of silence.
Shivi, Brekis, Zadra, Delgado, Dorch, Jordan, Kishel.
Here. This time, we'll go to public comment. Do you have any other public comment cards? I'd like to welcome, I think it's Reno High School, here for government class. I'm sorry that Mr. Denae is not here to entertain you, but maybe he'll be here later. Ernest Aldridge? Identify yourself for the record, please, sir.
Say again, please.
Identify yourself for the record.
My name is Ernest Aldridge.
Okay. You have three minutes.
Good morning, Mayor Kishel.
Morning.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council. I wanted to comment on information that I have. I have been informed, and I therefore believe, that the city council, or correction, the city of Reno, no longer uses its charter. And that they have adopted and adapted the Nevada Revised Statutes to its own use. I would like to oppose anything that along this line because the city of Reno, under its charter, is a creature of the statutes. So therefore, their jurisdiction is limited to that which is given by the statutes. If the city abandons its charter and takes up the NRS, or the Nevada Revised Statutes, as its functioning system, then it would put it in the position of a municipal corporation creating and determining its own jurisdiction. This is in violation of the law. This is what I think has happened. This is what I've been informed has happened, and this is what I will continue to investigate to find out what the limits that the city of Reno has set for itself if indeed it has abandoned its charter. Thank you.
Thank you. Stuart Mackey.
Yes, my name is Stuart Mackay, and I was also dismayed to see that you folks are using the NRSs, okay, in place of your ordinances, and in 5.05, it specifically says to use your ordinances. It doesn't have anything in here that displays that you have stopped using them, or can stop using them, as a city. And it's like the water issues where I videotaped all of your meetings. Okay, you remember me sitting there videotaping them? Well, I had a hearing about a year ago, and the water department says that they don't have any reference to any of those meetings. They have nothing. In fact, when I told him that I had videotaped them, and he was welcome to use them during the hearing, he closed the hearing and walked out of the room. So that's, we feel that the city government is getting pretty lax, and there's some major problems, especially with the old water. And if you guys have gone to the NRSs, and you guys have dropped the charter which controls you, this has got to be a major problem. I have talked with people at the Legislative Council, and I'm going to go down and talk with Rick Combs, the head of the council, and find out exactly what you had to do. And you have my address and everything. I'm requesting, under 239, that you send me a copy of the minutes from when you changed over to the NRSs from your charter, and how many people were allowed to vote, whether or not the people were informed and could vote, you know, en masse, to whether or not this charter could be dropped. Because I know it restricts you quite a bit. So I would appreciate if that could be taken care of, and 239 gives you five days to get that stuff to me. Okay? Or it makes you a felon. Thank you very much. You have my address.
Thank you very much. Mark Markell.
I'm a councilor, Reno resident, and my mission alive is to educate students in the community about what happens when one gets in the car with a drunk driver. I'm reading from this because I suffer from a traumatic brain injury, a TBI, and I get off track, and I get off track. Through Mark's pad, People Against Drunk Driving, I help to prevent others from making the same mistakes and suffering the same consequences I have. In the city of Reno, in November 2012, there were 60 DUIs, 19 DUI crashes, and two DUI fatalities. In the city of Reno, in November 2013, there were 46 DUI arrests, 14 DUI crashes, and no fatalities. That's it. In 2012, there were 10,322 people killed drunk driving crashes nationwide. There were 9,878 people killed in 2011. So that's a lot. And finally, I want to say, parents, don't drive drunk with your kids in the car. Kids, listen to your parents. Listen to your parents. They were your age once, and listen to your teachers. They just want to make good citizens of you. They're there to help. I never listened to either one, and look what happened to me. My life has changed because I got in a car with a drunk driver. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Now, the public comment cards, now we'll move to item A5, City Manager Announcements. Any announcements?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two. First, I wanted to acknowledge that we have the Reno-Tahoe Senior Games, which is coming up here shortly. Registration for the Reno-Tahoe Senior Games is associated with a fitness program that the city's put together for people 50 years and older. The games offer participants several individual and team competitions, including skiing, table tennis, bowling, archery, and more. And those who are interested in registering, you can either go to our website, which is Reno.gov/seniorgames, or call 334-2262. Again, that's 334-2262. The second item I wanted to mention is the senior giving tree. The city of Reno is collaborating with the Washoe County Senior Services on a senior giving tree. You can visit one of the holiday trees here at City Hall, and you'll find their wish tags that feature a number of basic items that seniors in our community are in need of. If you want more information on this program, we would direct you to the number of 334-4636, and again, to our website, Reno.gov. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. This time, we'll go to approval of the agenda. Before we do, I've got items here. Item E2 was pulled. That's the acceptance of settlement and release agreement with Charter of Communication for Cable Franchise Fee Audit Findings. That is pulled for another agenda. Public comment was at 12:00 noon. Proclamations, we have none. Presentations, Holiday Card Heroes. Valerie Truce will be here from the Northern Nevada Chapter of the American Red Cross. Public hearings, 12:15, none. Public hearing, we do have a 6 o'clock on item M1 with the Southeast Connector. Any other changes you wish to make? Have a motion, or have a second? Have a second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item B, Cash Disbursements. Any questions, or any?
You gotta do the minutes.
Oh, did I fly by the minutes? I sure did. Let's go to the approval of the minutes for November 20.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes.
To recommend some changes that I have noted. With respect to page one, the public comment, Mr. Obuster, the address is given as 1039 Holbolt. I don't recognize that as a street within the city of Reno. I think it maybe is Holcomb or Humboldt. I was wondering if the clerk could check on that. On page 18, some comments that I made with respect to waste management. It reads, "Councilmember Brekis suggested the city should evaluate their overall relationship with waste management." I don't think that is consistent with the point I was trying to make. I was emphasizing that the city's relationship with waste management is indeed a long-term one, with the need for interpretations that are jointly workable to both parties, and likely modifications to be put into effect over the period of the contract. And also, on page 25, with respect to the request for additional, excuse me, page 21, with request for the additional, the reassignment of the subsidy assistance to Summit Sierra Mall, it says, "Councilmember Brekis said she would not support the motion because she did not believe they," and it's an ambiguous "they," "had done their due diligence under Section 19 accessors and assigns." And I think more truly, my points was, "Councilmember Brekis said that she would not support the motion because she did not believe the city had fully implemented due diligence in the reassignment to understand if the successor was of equal qualifications to uphold the responsibilities and obligations of the agreement." With those two material changes to my comments, I would propose a motion.
Well, I think that the staff should review those comments made, and if they're necessary, make your necessary corrections.
Okay, so should we put motion to move it to another agenda item, then?
I don't know. It's necessary for that. I mean, they can look at it and make your correction.
Are you agreeing with the changes, or bringing them up?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, well, I motion to approve with the changes?
Okay. Okay. A motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Any other changes? Item B, Cash Disbursements. Any disclosures? Chair to entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, second. Have a second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item C, Proclamations, we have none. Presentations, today we have Economic Development Update, Dice, One Big Idea Competition. Eric? Excuse me, come on.
Good afternoon. For the record, Deanna Geshider, Director of Communications and Community Engagement. In support of the council's priority to promote vibrant economy and livable neighborhoods, we are inviting local businesses and entrepreneurs to city council meetings to share their success stories. Eric Hatch is here today, and he submitted this idea through our Think Reno Idea Portal, and was the winner of the 2003 Dice Competition, Design is Innovation, Creativity, and Energy Big Idea Design Competition, for his unique urban trailhead concept. He has lived in the Reno Sparks area for 19 years, and he is a Reno High graduate. With a Master's in Architecture from the University of Idaho, Eric is currently involved in the design of the new William N. Pennington Student Achievement Center on the UNR campus. Eric is here today to present his winning Think Reno Trailhead idea to you, and currently has 23 positive votes on the idea. With that, it's my pleasure to introduce Eric Hatch.
Identify yourself for the record.
My name is Eric Hatch.
Thank you.
Before I begin, I'd like to thank some folks from the council for helping me in the process. Bill Thomas, Fred Turnier, Deanna, Maureen McKissick, and Alex Woodley, who I met with about this idea. And along with that, I'd also like to thank some members in the community who have helped me in this design process. Jeremy Smith with the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency, Tom Weatherby from Yescosigns, Dylan Coon from the Reno Collective, Colin Robertson from the Nevada Museum of Art, Nicholas Homer from Caspore Engineering, Justin Boninoma from Hood Machine, and my girlfriend Jessica for putting up with me. So to start, I moved here in 1995 with my parents when I was 10 years old. We moved from California, and we absolutely love it here. But when we moved here, we didn't really know quite where to live. At the time, the suburbs were really booming, and so we moved as far away from downtown as possible at the time, and that was at the top of Los Altos Parkway. And since then, my folks moved a little bit closer to downtown once they realized that downtown isn't so bad. And nowadays, when we refer to suburban sprawl within the design community and within many influences, we think of suburban sprawl as a four-letter word. It's really frowned upon. And that argument has kind of cemented itself. And now, the design community is trying to bring folks back into the downtown, and really energize city downtowns, especially here in Reno. And this brought about the Dice Competitions, One Big Idea. This was essentially a competition to ask designers to promote walkability within downtown Reno. And how do we do that is really what the conference was about. So my design was based around the idea that there's nothing wrong with Reno, because there isn't anything wrong with Reno. We have an amazing river, which most cities don't have, running through the center of it. We have amazing vegetation. The walkability is great. It's just a matter of drawing a new demographic into the city. And that's where my video comes in. So whenever you're ready. The Truckee Meadows has a distinct, successful, walkable flavor all its own. However, our community's greatest walkable asset doesn't exist within its core, but requires us to journey into the Sierras, to the Tahoe Rim Trail. The Tahoe Rim Trail is a premier network of man-made, multi-use paths flowing beyond the perimeter of Lake Tahoe shores. Volunteers maintain and build the trail system, as well as plan for future branches and extensions. Successful features of the Rim Trail include natural terrain paths, lush vegetation, beautiful Lake Tahoe, and inspiring moments around every corner. Sadly, downtown Reno could never become as successful as the Rim Trail. Where are all the beautiful paths or luscious vegetation? Where are the inspiring moments? Where's the Tahoe water? Where's the, well, wait. So if downtown Reno already has the necessary features to become a successful, vibrant, walkable environment like the Rim Trail, then what's our urban trail network missing? With the use of a smartphone, smartwatch, or GPS-equipped device, users can sync their movement through the city to an LED display located at Reno's trailhead. In real time, the trailhead displays user movement through streets, sidewalks, parks, alleyways, and buildings. As more users sync their downtown interaction to the trailhead, more layers of data overlap, creating an interactive map showing how people truly move through the city. With the help of a trailhead app, users can adjust the color and thickness of their route, allowing a journey to change its form within the context of the display. This data-share structure becomes an icon, allowing users to change its appearance through movement. While an icon on its surface, the trailhead also gives Reno's institutions the ability to become a node within the network. A node can sync its operations with the trailhead and social media, creating a link between an establishment and its city. The connection becomes a guide, giving launch to a purposeful journey towards one of Reno's promontories. Finally, the trailhead stores a wealth of rich data to help the city grow and evolve. As our modes of transportation change, businesses transform, and new events emerge, the trailhead can track the evolution of movement through downtown Reno. That data can help inform how a city's infrastructure can adapt to its people, allowing for a clearer, more fluid, walkable environment. This idea comes from a more deeper concept of the smart city, which a lot of cities are really focusing on right now. We have the technology to do any number of things by connecting with people and places. And we have the abilities to go much deeper as a city, and as a community, and even down to the individual, in helping the communication really show itself in the public. And on its surface, it's an interactive art piece. It's a static design that shows a beautiful interaction of layers, and colors, and textures to give people an actual view of how people in real time move through the city. Much deeper is its ability to capture data, and really understand how people move through the city so that we can use that to better plan our infrastructure, and help bring out the best of Reno, because we have it all here. It's all here. We just need to gear how people use the city to create new things, the new buildings, new streets, new sidewalks, and really develop how the city makes itself better and more walkable in the future. This promotes social capital, intellectual capital, and physical capital, which are the three mainstays of smart technology and smart city development. And I guess, from here, I'm open to any questions. I have a business plan that I developed with the help of people in the community. And in fact, the technology for this was developed in a weekend by some folks at the Reno Collective who were a part of a design competition for their own project. And so this stuff isn't like space-age-future kind of stuff. This stuff can be done, and it's right here, and it's ready to go. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Ms. Shivi.
Yeah. I love it. I think it's brilliant, and I love the art. And I just think data is so important today as a city. So I think the big question is, how much is this? What does this cost?
When am I going to line item five here? No. It's under a million. We're talking, okay, here, I'll just tell you. $518,000 with a design contingency of about $100,000, just in case.
And this is your idea?
Yeah.
There aren't any other cities doing this?
No. There are cities really engaging with smart technology right now. For example, Boston has developed a speaker, in a sense, in five different places around the city where joggers, walkers, and bicyclists can walk up to it, grab these handholds. It'll detect their heart rate, and then it'll play a music based on an algorithm that is unique to that person. So cities are engaging in smart technology to do stuff. This is unique, though, and this is something that hasn't been developed.
And do you have a patent on this? Is this something you patent?
I've talked to an attorney, and the process has begun. The real patent is not in this. This is essentially putting things that already exist together to create a new thing. So the real patent exists in the programming and the code to build the app that does this work. So once that's built, then, once the funding happens, then it's built, then it can be patented.
I could see this on Google campus. But you've got very smart gentlemen over at the collective, and I think, you know, you're going in the right direction, obviously. You know, funding is going to be a big issue. I would get really involved in many hackathons as you can, and try to, you know, work your way up through that, because that can get you a lot of exposure for something like this. And I don't know about grants, but we've also got a lot of smart people at the city. Bill Thomas is a major champion, Maureen McKissick, people like this. So I think, you know, you're talking to the right people, and it's all about believing in your idea, and just keep pounding the pavement, because I think it's phenomenal. It really is.
Appreciate it.
It's incredible.
Mr. Delgado.
Yeah. That's great. That's awesome, the project. I have been familiar with Dice. Last year, they had a competition, so I know, just being within the city itself, having architects and urban designers, and everyone coming together and bringing a product together, it's awesome. But this is great. I went to two different conferences over the last month, one in Philadelphia, and one in Kansas City, about all these cities and what they're trying to do, bringing tech into their cities and municipalities, and this is it. I mean, right, straight grassroots from our community, you see this come to life. We spent so much money and so much of our resources to try and find where people go, where they walk. How do you develop that? And we have that right here in this application, being formatted right for us, so we know where are the walkable streets, which alleyways are being met, and need to be cleaned up, and other things like that. So I think that's great. Great job, Eric. Look forward to seeing your product come to life, and if there's anything I can do, please shoot me an email.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Jordan.
I have a question. Have you done this presentation in front of other groups?
I did this presentation with the Dice Conference, which was essentially just this video, and friends at bars. But I've done this presentation for folks that I've met to help me build the process. I helped present this to my firm, HK Architects, who have been an enormous help to me in helping to develop the idea, and just, you know, people close to me to help me gear this and put this in the right direction.
The reason I ask that, because I wasn't sure if we were the first, like, government body that you had been in front of, or any entity. Obviously, funding is going to be your biggest hurdle, and I would just recommend that you use some of our staff to direct you to GOED, which is the Governor's Office on Economic Development. This is right up their alley with the things in which they're helping to fund these days. So EDON, maybe, I'm not sure, but certainly our staff can help direct you to some, you know, possible financial sources to get this going.
That'd be great. I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck to you. Item D2, Holiday Card for Heroes, Valerie Truce.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. I'm not Valerie Truce. She was kind enough to set this up. My name is Clara Andriola, and I'm the CEO of the American Red Cross Northern Nevada Chapter. So if I could take a moment to share some information, as you just mentioned, data is definitely important. And before I get to the Holiday Mail for Heroes campaign, I would like to share our appreciation for our strong appreciation for our strong partnership with the city of Reno, specifically giving huge kudos to Chief Hernandez, Division Chief Tim Spencer, and the Fire Department, who we work with very closely. We responded in FY13 to over 100 incidents and helped almost 270 families. There's a lot of things that people know us for, obviously, in terms of disasters, but many don't know, for instance, our international line of services, where we provided and are currently providing help to hundreds of thousands of people in the Philippines. So you may not be aware of that. The other thing that I wanted to share with you is the fact that in FY13, we helped train over 575,000 people right in Northern Nevada. It's amazing. That's a lot of people. Obviously, it's more than one class, but certainly a lot of life-saving skills. So we're very proud of that. The reason that I'm here today is to celebrate the holidays. And you may know that the American Red Cross was created by a congressional charter. We truly are an unfunded mandate. We do not receive any state or federal funding, but we certainly have requirements, and many are legal requirements in the event of a major disaster. But in our congressional charter is also our responsibility to help with military families, which you may not be aware of, and active-duty military members. In FY13, we responded and helped facilitate emergency communications to 769,000 calls with emergencies all over the world from Northern Nevadans right here. So in part of our responsibility to uphold our congressional charter is a program called Holiday Mail for Heroes. And what we do is we encourage everyone to sign holiday cards to just say thank you to service members. We distribute those cards throughout Northern Nevada, but also around the entire world to every active-duty member that we can certainly get to. So today, I'm hoping that you can all sign holiday cards so that we can distribute them. Last year in Northern Nevada, we collected approximately 5,000 cards. Our goal was to reach 15,000, and I think we're doing it. There are volunteers right now, literally, who are sorting through cards to get in the mail by December 6. So if I may, I'd like to pass out these cards, and I'd love to have you write a message, whatever that message would be, and again, we'll make sure that they get to military members serving right here in Northern Nevada and around the world. So can I?
Okay.
I really appreciate it, and again, I do want to commend our partnership, and we work really hard. We depend on over 400 volunteers. We cover 87,000 square miles, so I'll repeat that. We cover 87,000 square miles in terms of our jurisdiction. We serve, obviously, all those families that are in need. We respond to a home fire approximately every 48 hours, and so we certainly appreciate the partnership we have with the city of Reno and many other partners throughout the whole Northern Nevada and the state.
Thank you very much.
So thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
And happy holidays.
Same to you. All right. Yes. Oh, I thought it was a man. We'll go to the consent agenda. Before we do approval, one of them I want to talk about is E1A on new alcohol. Any others pull for discussion?
E3.
E3? Any others?
(Inaudible).
All right, motion made, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. E1A asks for that pulling. They're wanting a packaged liquor store, which is right next door to Reno High School. I find this very hard for me to accept.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Michael Chomp, Business Relations Manager for the Business License Division. Yeah, they have applied for an application for packaged liquor. This is the former bank that is on the corner of Foster and Booth, located across the street from the 7-Eleven in the Reno High area.
You also have the Boys and Girls Club, the new Boys and Girls Club, that's less than a quarter of a mile away from this same location. So I personally have a problem with them having packaged liquor and everything. Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Chomp, I've looked into this in the past. Please tell me the history of the zoning of this parcel, and were there any entitlements or approvals given on the land use side of things?
Yeah, I'll defer to Claudia Hansen on that.
Claudia Hansen, Planning and Engineering Manager. There was a special use permit approved April 5, 2012, for a convenience store and commercial development within 300 feet of a secondary school, and it is zoned NC neighborhood commercial.
Okay, so it's zoned NC. A special use permit is required for a convenience store in NC zoning?
Correct.
And this special use permit was approved by the planning commission when?
April 5, 2012.
Okay. I wasn't in office then, but tell me, did the city council see that at that time?
No, it was not appealed.
Does the city council have authority, like they once did, and I don't know if we have to, see a special use permit being granted down at the planning commission or denied, and bring it up for review?
At any time, a city council member can appeal, and often in the past that has happened, and that brings it up to city council, but nobody did appeal.
Well, then they have to be in appeal, and then they're a party to it, and it brings in questions about can they deliberate? I guess, and I don't want to go into this too much, but they can't bring it up for scrutiny or review like they do in Sparks. Is that?
I don't know how Sparks operates, but the only way they would be able to on a regular special use permit would be through the appeal process.
Okay. And then maybe for Mr. Chomp, the complexity then that a special use permit has been issued through the land use entitlement, how does that merge with what discretion we have here on the packaged liquor business license?
While he's coming up, the special use permit was for a convenience store, which could or could not include alcohol, so it didn't specify one way or another. Typically, convenience stores do. It is limited that there's no adult or drug paraphernalia allowed to be sold there, so this is just the alcohol license.
Those were conditions of the special use permit?
Correct.
But alcohol was not restricted from the special use permit-
That is correct.
Okay. I guess, what discretion do we have?
Craig Scott, Reno City Attorney's Office. The standard memo that goes with the business license matters discusses it, and I'll read from my memo. It says, "One of the grounds for denying it in your ordinance is good cause." And that would be probably the most applicable one here, but cases generally construe good cause as having two components. "The reason for denial must be reasonably related to the public welfare, and the decision must be supported by substantial evidence and not be arbitrary or capricious. Substantial evidence requires more than the mere statements of interested parties and their counsel and the opinions of council members." And this comes from the City Council of Reno versus Travelers Hotel case. Accordingly, a sufficient factual record should be developed before a privileged license is denied for good cause. A delay or continuance to gather more information or evidence is permissible, provided the delay is not unreasonable in duration or purpose. So in other words, if you have specific concerns about what may be going on, you could direct staff to go look at, for instance, the other businesses and find out if there have been instances of the kids getting alcohol there or something so that we could develop a record. I think some of that has been looked at already. I'm not sure. But that would be basically your legal standard here, unless there's a zoning issue or some other grounds.
Ms. Jordan.
Mr. Scott, can you answer the question for me, what a reasonable period of time is for consideration or more research on this? Because this dovetails right into, you know, we have a moratorium on packaged liquor in the downtown area, and I think I would certainly like, and maybe this is an L item for a future agenda issue, is to evaluate packaged liquor in the entire city, and this certainly is, this just launches that discussion. So my question is, how long do we have for the approval or denial of this request before us today, and what's considered a reasonable amount of time?
I wish that the cases could provide a specific amount of time, but they don't, so it would probably be fairly fact-specific. As long as you have direction, and that's being pursued, and haven't come back with an answer, I think we could support that reasonable causes or reasonable delay is still, we're still within the reasonable delay. But if we aren't pursuing something and we are simply delaying without any purpose, that would be unreasonable delay.
Okay, so direction, and again, I'm getting to a future agenda item, which I will repeat under the L items. If the direction and the support is to evaluate packaged liquor in the entire city, this could be part of that evaluation.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. This application would already be in the queue before any future action would be taken by the council. So that would come into consideration as to what is reasonable.
Mr. Chomp. You have a convenience store about 100 yards away from this one.
That's correct.
Do they sell liquor?
Yes.
Do they have a packaged liquor?
Yes. 7-Eleven across the street has packaged liquor, off-premise sales only. We have Long's Drug, too. I do believe in that-
It's not a 7-Eleven, is it?
Yeah, 7-Eleven is on the-
Corner of California?
Californian booth. Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
CVS across the street also.
So it's only 100 yards difference, so, okay.
Yes.
My objections are kind of shot down, so I will now support it.
Well, I'll make the motion since it's my ward. I share your objections, but I really think the time and place would have been the special use permit or a condition to prohibit alcohol in this location. I think it would have been within our discretion, but of course, that didn't come up to the council. That was a staff recommendation to the planning commission, and I think it's an unfortunate one, but I think they are vested in their rights to get this permit. I really do. So I will make the motion.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Well, item E3. Ms. Adra.
Mr. Mayor, are you really going to let, on the prior motion, the prior one to this one, are you really going to let Ms. Veritas sit there without any kind of conversation with her?
Look, I know her well, and she's already got what she wanted, and so I don't really think she's going to. Knowing her as well as I do, she's not going to get up and open the door for something. But we do appreciate you and thank you for being here.
Welcome to Ward Two.
Welcome to Reno.
She has an open house this Saturday.
She knows when she's got a winner. You want to talk about E3?
No.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I thought you didn't. All right. Item E3.
Can you give me a little bit of background on this?
This item, Daniel Johnson, Emergency Communication Technology Manager, for the record. This item was when we switched to our Google Apps for Government application last year. This is the continuation of the licenses and maintenance to maintain that software program. It was approved last year to switch from our old email system, which was not meeting the needs of the city, and this product gave us both the email, the collaboration, the instant messaging, and all the other tools that come with Google Apps for Government. SADA Systems was the implementer because Google doesn't do the implementations directly, so they put us in touch with SADA Systems, who did the implementation and carry the licenses for us.
Okay. How is SADA Systems so far?
What's that?
How have they been so far?
They've been excellent in their support and their implementation and support of the product, yes.
Okay, good. All right, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll go to resolutions. Item E2.
Resolution number 7922, resolution approving sponsorship to Art Town for the 2014 festival, and approval of the agreement in the amount of $112,500.
Motion made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item E2.
Resolution number 7923, resolution approving sponsorship to the Pioneer Center for Performing Arts for the 2013-2014 Performing Arts Season, and approval of the agreement in the amount of $40,960.
Have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. I assume neither one of you wanted to oversell. Okay, now we'll move to ordinance introduction. Item I1.
Which is bill number 6878, ordinance amending the Reno Municipal Code Title IV entitled Business License Code, Chapter 4.04 entitled "In General," adding a new section 4.04.65, 065, entitled "Stay on the Acceptance of Business License Applications Related to Medical Marijuana Establishments Operating Within the Corporate Limits of the City and Other Matters of Property Relating thereto."
Have a motion in second. All in favor?
Mayor, may I be recognized for discussion-
Yes.
-prior to the vote? I will not be voting in support of this, as I have previously expressed my reasons for this approach to the medical marijuana interim experience of a stay.
All right. Have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Show the vote, 6-1. Item J, Finance Administration.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Thomas. For the record, I'm Kyle West, City and Safety and Training Manager. Today, I'm seeking approval of a proposed contract with Allied Barton Security Services to provide two armed guards for City Hall, one for the first-floor entrance and one for the second-floor entrance, beginning January 1, 2014. Our current City Hall Security Services contract with Securitas Security Services expires December 31, 2013. Recently, the Northern Nevada Regional Intelligence Center performed a security assessment of City Hall that included recommendations for a more robust security guard presence. City staff has taken these recommendations under advisement and determined that the security guard services needed at City Hall can be effectively met by joining with the current State of Nevada security contract with Allied Barton. Mr. Mark Garrigan, the Allied Barton manager located here in Reno and assigned to their local office on Terminal Way, and I are both available for questions or concerns you have regarding this contract.
Was this put out to bid?
No, it wasn't. With the state originally, yes.
But we didn't go out seeking other people, security services in town?
We did attempt this summer to joiner with a contract with Washoe County, and we went out for bid on that contract, and the company that won that bid, which is Securitas, we were unable to come to agreement with exceptions to the contract.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. The State of Nevada put it out to bid. We are joining under the joiner provision in NRS that allows us to-
I understand that, but I just wonder why we didn't seek our own.
Yes, I understand it, but I just wanted to let you know the process.
Because we have several securities companies in town that have armed guards and stuff like that, and I just don't know why we didn't put it out ourselves, looking at it.
Yes, with the intent of the Washoe County joiner, we worked with Washoe County in putting out that original contract in May, and again, that company that won the bid, we were unable to come to agreement with the exceptions in that contract.
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized-
Yes.
-to ask some questions also? I have read the RFP and the response somewhat closely. Tell me this, have you spoken to anyone at the State of Nevada and asked them if they are satisfied with these services that are being provided?
Yes, I have. I've spoken to the city of Las Vegas that's also joined in this contract, representatives from NDOT, representatives from Clark County Library Services, and from the Southern Nevada RTC as well, and every one of the individuals that we've spoken to are extremely satisfied with the services.
When did the state's contract go into effect?
June 1.
June 1, okay. So they've had almost six months, and all these people you've talked to express satisfaction with the services, and that's why you're recommending we joiner here?
Yes.
Okay, let me ask you this. What's the extension policy or provisions in here? It's for one year, is that correct?
No. The contract, it was a two-year state contract-
Yes.
-so we would joiner on until the state contract, it ended in May 31, 2015, but there are two additional years that the contract can continue, and so it would go- there are two additional years that the contract can continue, and so it would go, it could possibly go till May 31st, 2017.
Okay, I guess from my perspective, and I don't know what the city manager's plans are for essentially joining and then rolling over year after year, I'd like, and I know it's based upon budget, annual budget appropriations, but I'd also like to have a understanding after one year, how this is working. I think sometimes I see these contracts just rolling over, rolling over, and I'm not seeing, even though sometimes they exist, or understand what evaluative efforts are being made by the city management to know if we should go into the rollover provisions. So, what are your plans for that? How do you see this working?
Yes, I'd like to ask Mr. Garrigan to input.
Thank you. Mark Garrigan, from Allied Barton Security Services. Ma'am, what we do, we're different. We like to think we're different from other security companies. We actually have that in place for you. We come out on a weekly basis, we evaluate our officers, and we also meet with the client on a weekly basis. On a monthly basis, we do what's called a client interview report. That's the time every month, you evaluate us on a monthly basis. If there's something that you like that we're doing, if there's something you don't like we're doing, or if there's something else you want us to do, that's the time that you can tell us, and we'll make those changes immediately. So, it's not an annual thing, it's not a biannual thing, it's a monthly thing with us.
Okay. Well, thank you, thank you for that. One other question, Mr. West, will we continue to have a police officer assigned to their council meetings?
Yes.
You see that, we will, okay. I'll leave, you know, ask the rest of the group what they'd like to do, but I would probably prefer to see this just for one year, for us to get a feedback.
Okay, Mr. Dorch.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the way I understand this contract is, it's pay-as-we-go, I mean, it's if we're using them, if we need the two officers or the two security guards, then we're paying them, but it's not required. I mean, we're not, if we determine we don't need one of them, we can, we can cut it down to one, or however we manage that contract.
Yes, that would be correct.
And then, is this contract exclusive? I mean, if we wanted to go out and bid, six months from now, could we go out and bid?
We would be in a contract with Allied Barton at this point, if we were...
But is there exclusivity in the contract?
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. This contract has a contract termination without cause, so it would allow unilateral termination. I would not recommend you go out when you're in contract with someone for an RFP, but you could...
I'm just saying, if they're, if they're just satisfied and we want to make a change or something like that, we have that ability within the contract.
There is absolutely the ability to do that in this contract.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Are these people in uniform or plainclothes?
They're in uniform, sir.
Uniform, okay. So, they're identifiable?
Mr. West has actually made a special request at the hour of times, so it's going to up the professionalism of our officers in the office.
But they won't be in a suit and tie like you?
No.
They'll be on a uniform, so we can see where the town...
White uniform, sure, with patches and blue...
Okay. Ms. Adra, you had something?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would just...
Your microphone?
It is on, maybe I'm just not closing up. I'd just like to make reference that the contract that we've had with Securitas has never been in poor performance. If anything, they've performed to the standards, far above even the standards that we had in the prior assigned duties for them. And I just want to make that clear, that they just, the company wasn't able to meet the conditions of the current RFP or demands, correct?
Yes, it was not for cause.
Right, thank you.
I've noticed the last few times I've been over to the homeless shelter, security, identifiable, security has not been there. I would like for you to look into that and see why they're not there and not identifiable. Has nothing to do with this contract.
Yes, sir.
I've got a motion, Mr. Dorch, you give me a motion?
Need to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Have a second. Have a second. Discussion?
A little discussion. I would like to include that next year, if you want to exercise the rollover, the manager provide us some reasoning that he is satisfied in executing the rollover agreement. I think that's within our purview to see how we're doing, since this is a joiner that we've kind of come on. It was a RFP written for a different level of government, and so I do think that this extra oversight of one year would be useful for the council.
I think the city manager would keep us posted on what they're seeing and stuff like that. If there was a problem, I think he'd do that. I don't think we have to have a motion telling him to come back and tell us that.
So, you're not accepting of the amendment to the motion?
I don't like the amendment to the motion.
Okay, well...
Is there a second to our amendment to the motion? Okay.
Okay, well, next year this time, when it rolls over, I'll be asking about it.
That's great. Adam J. Two, thank you. Wait, wait, I got a vote, don't we? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam J. Two.
Good afternoon, Deanna Geshider, Director of Communications and Community Engagement. This, this report today is meant to provide you, the council, with an update on the public outreach efforts for the new residential curbside recycling and solid waste disposal service program that has been completed to date, as well as address your concerns that were brought up at the last council meeting. And OCCE staff has been working closely with waste management, and specifically Sarah Palito, who's here today, to educate residents on the coming changes. I'd like to go ahead and give you a brief overview of an update of what has been going Highlights that Jason Guddey's went over with you last meeting that I just want to quickly remind you about, include that online, we've had a dedicated website on Reno.gov/recyclewebpage, plus a homepage spotlight, and we've done a big push through our social marketing outlets. There is also a dedicated waste management website. There's a brochure that outlines the program and encourages readers to visit Reno.wastmanagement.com to select their cart sizes, et cetera. There's a video that was two minutes and 24 seconds that went through the entire program, explains the benefits to the community, provides visuals of the cart sizes, et cetera. Billing inserts, we've hit January, April, July, October, and will do again in January. We were also in the TMA insert September of 2013. An information flyer will be mailed to each customer in their January bill, and this collateral will explain the new program to the customers. Customers will also receive stickers for their excess waste in their January and April inserts. E-blast, both from Waste Management to their email subscriber list, and Reno Connect through our email database, has been sent in October. We had 112 click-throughs, and we will do that again in January. The snipe, there's a snipe on the envelope of the outside of the Waste Management bill in October. There was a customer out-dial program that will happen in January and February, and we also were able to include an ad in our Reno Senior Newsletter that was, 3,000 were distributed. We were at various community events, including the Town Hall meetings, Earth Day, and Art Town, and the media coverage report, just to give you a quick synopsis, there were 68 hits, 52 were in newspaper, 14 on television, and two in radio. So, that's where we've been. We have quite a bit coming up, including additional community events and public meetings. We also, Sarah will be spearheading a media pitch hit to start at the end of December, and focus in January and March. We'll be using the opening of the CNG station to use, to create some more interest and more awareness about the program. And then, there's collateral coming. There is a whole welcome kit that is a part of the cart that will be delivered to the house. So, when they get their cart and they don't understand, or they're not aware of the program, they can get the piece of collateral there that I'll show you in just a moment, and it explains the entire program. And then, in addition to that, after the last council meeting, we did get together and we were able to do some media buys. Using City of Reno PSA status, we were able to negotiate quite a good buy with our radio partner and our television partner. We have 350 10-second commercials to air in December on seven radio stations, each day reaching approximately 225,000 persons that are 18 years and older, an average of 12.3 times. The live reads will happen during the afternoon, traffic reports between 3:00 and 5:00, and that includes stations like Sunny, Alice, The River, Swag, Bob, CBS Sports, and Little City 97.3, so a wide demographic. We also have a buy with Kolo, 45 10-second commercials to air December in the 6:00 to 9:00 hour during Good Morning America, plus some full-day rotators to be included in that as a bonus. The reach on the media buy is estimated to reach 73% of the population, approximately 194,000 people 3.48 times. In addition to the sample packet that was handed out to you, I have, oh, great. Okay. It's not good if you shake. This is the sample of the collateral that will be included in the carts. So, just take a look, it's quite a bit of detail about what can go in, what can't go in, explaining the program. Any questions that have been being asked through Reno Direct? We've been keeping a fact sheet, so that most frequently asked questions are being addressed in this piece, and then I'll just take one second to show you the spot, the 10-second television spot.
Reno, say goodbye to the crates, and hello to the new single-stream recycling cart arriving at your curb in January. To learn more, visit Reno.WM.com.
And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions?
I have a question. Who's paying for the production of all those materials?
Waste management.
Waste management is. Do we have, have we expended any money in this outreach campaign?
Internal resources, not really.
No?
None of our dollars.
None of our dollars, okay, thank you.
But we've used every distribution outlet that we've had available to us to get the word out to our residents.
Okay.
Sure.
And at our last meeting, when we continued this to today, we heard the figure, I think it was like 6,000.
6,000?
No, resident users who had identified which of the options they wanted. It was very low.
It was a third.
It was about 30%.
About a third of the market. Has that changed? 18,000?
It's, it's at what now?
18,000.
So, what percentage of users is that?
There's 62,000 total, so approximately a third.
Okay, so we're still very low. Was the cutoff date yesterday, today, or tomorrow?
The cutoff date is December 1st. So, if anyone is listening out there, please go to Reno.WM.com.
They've got less than 24 hours to, to select theirs, or they will automatically default to the second to the most costly of the services, correct?
Counsel, Sarah Palito, Communication Specialist for Waste Management. If they currently own their own cart and they're at a 32-gallon container, we're going to default them to the lowest service, which is the $13.85. If they currently have a 96-gallon container, they will default to the highest level, which is the $16.97. So, we, and we have gone through all of that data and filtered that to ensure that they get the right carts.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I have, I have a question. I like that you're diversifying some of the platforms for outreach. Hi, Sarah, how are you?
Hello.
Good. I guess my question is this, my biggest concern with regards to the outreach is probably seniors, and I'm not sure that a 10-second spot gives them a level of comfort of information to know what's coming, or what their options are. And I'm sorry, I had stepped out. Are you doing any kind of insert in the Sunday RGJs? Are you doing, that doesn't require a WWW, you know?
Right.
And not an insert in a bill?
We hadn't looked into doing that at this point. We can look for recommendations from council on that, but we definitely are going to be very aggressive in working with the media to provide coverage and stories in the upcoming months, which we feel we will be able to get a lot of coverage on that, because it is such an interest piece for the city, and for all of the residents.
Okay, okay. And the other thing is, for those, let me, let me flip the demographic a little bit. For those that get all of their information via the web, I go back to 10 seconds, I don't know that it gets you everything you need to know. Is Waste Management doing any kind of like a YouTube piece that they're pushing out via social media that expands on that 10 seconds?
Yes, we have a two-minute and 34-second long-form video, if you will, on our website. It's also on the City of Reno's website and on the City of Reno's Facebook page.
Okay, so we can help push that information out?
Absolutely, and KTMB has put that on their Facebook as well, and I can work with them again to see if they'd be willing to push that out to all of their followers.
Okay, thank you.
Oscar.
Spanish. Where's the outreach for the Spanish-speaking community?
We absolutely would like to do that, and probably will be working with staff to see if you would be willing to assist us with the Spanish outreach, maybe doing some in-studio interviews with some of the radio personalities.
So, you guys haven't done any really outreach up to this point, and then they have the fifth to pick their carts?
At this point, no.
That's like a quarter of the population in Reno?
You can certainly give direction today, Oscar.
Deadline's tomorrow.
I mean, that's...
I'm hearing it loud and clear.
Yeah.
Let me, may I? Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe recognize? Let me ask you this, if, you know, 40,000 people don't make their choice, they get the big one, right? They get, they get the larger service.
Mayor Feschelin, Council, Sarah Palito, Waste Management. It depends what their current service is now.
Okay.
If they currently have a 32-gallon container, we will default them to the lowest level.
How many, how many residents currently have the 32-ounce container?
There are about 11,000 customers.
11,000 out of 65,000. So, they'll go up at least $2 a month by default if they haven't already given you their preference.
That's correct, and even though the website will no longer be taking the application for selection of carts, they can still call our customer service phone number, or even come into our VASR office, and we're still going to be collecting that information up until the end of the month.
I guess where I'm going is I'm just pondering if it's in Waste Management's interest to have all the 96-gallon people go up $2 for, you know, three months until they figure it out, and then call and go down. I mean, it seems like it's in your financial interest to not have a lot of people know about this and make, you know, a choice that might be more cost-efficient for them.
It's actually very expensive for us to go out, grab the cart, swap it out, have it delivered, so...
What's the charge for, to a person for that swap out?
There isn't one at this point.
There's no point, no charge for the swap out?
No, so it's very expensive for us to actually deliver something that doesn't fit what they would like, and then for us to then have to go send out someone individually to that site or that home and switch it out.
You'll be doing that at no cost, okay.
Sarah, can you, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Just really quickly, I think that you guys better get pretty aggressive with your messaging. Obviously, it's clear to me, Councilwoman Jordan expressed the interest with seniors. I've, I've had many seniors contact me regarding, you know, the whole process, and this is new for them, and then also Councilman Delgado in regards to the Hispanic community. I think that that's a very strong message, and, you know, also, you guys have the resources and you have the financial ability to do it, and so, that's just a really strong message that I'm going to relay to you guys, because obviously, this is going to be very beneficial for you and for the city as well, but I just want to make sure that you guys know that these are two areas in the community that really need to understand.
All right, thank you for that information.
Sarah, I was just going to echo those comments that I think it's someone seriously dropped the ball and not...
Can you say that one more time?
Someone seriously dropped the ball with not focusing on particularly the Spanish-speaking community. I, I don't think we can emphasize enough how to make that a priority and quickly.
Okay, thank you for that.
Just really quickly, I would suggest maybe doing some outreach in the senior spectrum publication. I think it's a really good publication to really get a lot of seniors pick that up. It might be a very easy and targeted way to do it.
Okay.
Anything else?
So, will we get a feedback here in the next, in terms of the outreach and what's been happening, and...
Yeah, I think I'll follow up in memo, if that's appropriate.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
K. One.
K. One. Discussion, approval of council appointments to public bodies. Discussion, approval of council appointments to public bodies. I'll go down the list here. Access Advisory, Ms. Zadra. You're on the Access Advisory Committee. Do you want to stay on that?
Does anyone else? Ms. Zadra, I'm trying to hear your reaction.
Okay.
Mayor, that's one I have an interest in. Let me... If I may ask, Ms. Zadra, how many terms have you... How many years have you served as the liaison on this one?
One year.
One year, okay. Well, seeing that this is your final year on the city council or under this term, the office you hold, that's fine. I'll motion to continue, or is that... Are we going to take each of these? One motion and another?
Yeah, we're going to take... Yeah, let's just say, are there any major changes anybody wants to make?
I mean, are we looking to make changes?
Well, yeah, let's talk about that.
Oscar and I would like to make a change. I would like to propose that I take on... Get on the Art Town Board, and Oscar would like... Councilman Delgado would like to get on the U City Council.
We're just switching. Swapping it up.
Okay, there's a motion and a second.
I have a few others.
Wait a minute, let's vote on this one.
Oh, so we're going one-on-one. Slow down a minute.
Just the ones where there's change?
All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right, any others? What would you like? Can we go through these just one at a time?
Yeah, we'll take all there.
The District Board of Health appointment. Councilmember Zadra serves on that. How many... Expires eleven fourteen. I don't understand, was that a two-year appointment previously? What are the... How does that work?
I guess that's what we did at the time, was appointed her for two years.
I don't recall...
If that's what it says.
Which one are you on?
The District Board of Health.
Ms. Zadra, you're on still on the District Board of Health?
I finished one here. I've initiated a conference. I'd like to see what's on.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. The District Board of Health has the appointment going for a four-year term, but it expires at the end of any person-appointed term of office. I mean, obviously.
So, excuse me, so last year when we made this appointment for her, although it wasn't told to us at the time, I thought it was an appointment for one year, we were really appointing until her term expires? Is that correct?
Yes, you're exactly correct, Councilmember. That's pursuant to that in our local agreement. We have set out for you every board and commission that you have before you today in the spreadsheet with the term and the background on the appointments and the type of appointment and the length of appointment.
Okay, well, that's new information because I think we appointed last year without that information being in front of us, but tell me this: So next year, when we reappoint, say one of the new members comes on, that individual will hold that seat for four years then? Is that how that would work?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. Council would have to make an appointment at that time, and they would hold it as long as their term of office is. They may not be here for four years. If you chose next year someone who just is newly elected or elected for another four-year term, you would be accurate, but perhaps you picked a... The council could pick an existing council member that maybe isn't going to continue after a term of office, so you don't know. It's going to depend on the specific elected official and their terms of office, but once they are elected, they do serve the term.
Okay, for this one. Okay, so she is on, and we made that appointment last year, not thinking it was an annual appointment, but she's on until her term of office expires?
Yes, and just for the record, you know, I don't know the questions that were made available last year, so I understand that you indicate that you did not have that information, but other council members may have. I don't know, we'd have to look at the record.
Yeah.
And you've started that. I have a motion and I have a second.
I'm sorry, for what?
On the District Board of Health. Well, we don't need a motion.
Yeah, she's appointed.
She's on there. She's on there. Okay.
The Downtown Police Tax District Committee, Ms. Shivi, would you... Is that one that you want to continue on?
Something that you would like? I mean, honestly, because you serve on something similar.
Yeah.
If you... I mean, it might be more cohesive for you to do that.
I think there is consistency between the Downtown Police Maintenance District and the Downtown Maintenance District.
I agree.
And so I would be interested in that, and I'm... I have a few that I'd be willing to propose someone else take.
To do that for sure.
Downtown Police Tax District. Okay, Ms... Let's have a motion on that. I've got a motion and a second. Second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Economic Development, Financial Advisory, Historical Resources, Oversight Panel at School Facilities, Pioneer Center of the Arts, Recreation and Parks.
Mayor?
Yes?
I hold a few of those, the HRC, the Board, the Oversight Panel, they had one quickie meeting in advance of the AB forty-six that I was unable to attend. I'm willing, if anyone is interested in taking any of those, and in particular, the Parks Commission. That's a very active board. We know that we have tremendous challenges with our Parks Department. We can only maintain our facilities at half the level we desire. There's a lot of big issues before, but I've tremendously enjoyed being on the Parks Commission, but I would really encourage another member who takes an interest in that area to take over that role because there is so much, and it's so critical to the quality of life we provide to our...
Have you got things started over there that you've been working on?
No, I really don't. I think there's so much examination. You know, this young guy who came and talked to us about trailheads and great ideas about recreational quality of life, well, let's sit and talk dollars with him and other advocates because there's some very serious issues in our Parks Budget. So if anyone else who's maybe going to be here a while would like to take that, I'm happy to do it, but I'm also happy to stay on another term.
Okay. Well, why don't you stay on another term?
I want on there.
You want on there? Okay, good. Motion for Mr. Delgado to go on the Parks and Recreation Board.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Redevelopment Agency Board, Regional Planning, Regional Transportation, Reno Arts and Culture.
Well, it does appear that the RTC position is up, and I think Ms. Zadra, having been on... What is she on? She's on the Board of Health that we discussed and the Access Advisory. I think it's fair that one of the newer members maybe take that seat or someone who hasn't sat on that before.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Actually, I'd go ahead and move to reappoint Sharon, and I would step down and also move to appoint Naoma.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Why make that juggling around? I don't understand. Why doesn't... You're stepping down, Ms. Zadra.
Ms. Zadra, stay in.
Sharon's only had the opportunity to serve on that for a very short period of time.
She would have been on there two years when it finishes.
When it's completed.
Yeah.
And again, at that board, I've initiated two major activities that are just getting going that I'd like to see.
What are those activities, if you don't mind?
Crosswalk improvements on the Wana, finding funding for that that doesn't currently exist, specifically near the... I can't say the name of the school. It's the Jewish Youth Center and the Shared Federal Framework.
Okay, okay. Well, I'll... Was a motion on there?
I have a motion there to put Ms. Jordan on.
And it would probably be appropriate to put Naoma on the two-year term that's expiring and have you fulfill the one-year term.
Yes.
Would make sense for...
That's the motion.
So that would be my motion.
That's a second. Second's okay. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Arts and Culture, Reno Planning Commission, Reno Housing Authority, Reno Sparks Convention Center.
Excuse me on the Convention Center one. I don't recall last year notification as that these were two-year terms. They're co-terminous. What does that mean?
They go with your term.
They go with your term? Okay. You know, I feel like last year when we came on, none of this knowledge that these were co-terminus appointments were made available. And Madam Clerk, I don't know if that's your responsibility, or City Attorney, you seem to have a lot of say in this, and now we have a new format here that, oh, by the way, a lot of these appointments on the desirable boards are co-terminus, so...
Well, I think that some of the new board members didn't do the homework they needed to look at when we were bringing these up, but it was very evident that these things were there out of the twelve years I've been here.
They've always been expressed as co-terminus, two-year terms?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, Reno Tahoe Airport Authority, Senior Citizen Advisory Board, Sierra Arts Foundation, Special Events Committee, Stadium Authority, Truckee Meadows Tourism.
Mr. Mayor, I don't hear anybody else chiming in about changing anything else. I would just make a motion that all the remaining items remain the same.
Well, I want to get through the end here.
Which one you want?
I'll just keep one.
Okay. Truckee Meadows Water Authority, Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation, Truckee River Flood Management, Urban Forestry, Ward One Neighborhood Advisory, Ward Two Central Neighborhood Advisory.
I have a question, Mayor, about the River Flood Management Authority. The new spreadsheet with the new information says, under authority, that each member shall appoint one director for an initial term of one year and a director for an additional term of two years. So would it appear that the... That we would have directors on rotating annual years then? Staggered terms?
No, I think somebody could be appointed again.
Well, no, it would appear that when it was initially set up, one person was appointed for one year, one year was appointed... One person was appointed for two years. So one would expire in an odd year and one would expire in an even year, and yet I see this table saying that both expirations are on eleven fourteen. How can that be? It does not seem consistent with the information that was provided by whoever worked up this table. So why do we have two appointments expiring on an odd even year when that's not how the body was set up in the first place?
Well, I think we only have one expiring this year.
No, it says expires eleven fourteen for both of the flood authority seats.
Each member shall appoint two directors of whom shall be elected by members of the government, but each member shall appoint... What, you've got something different than I have?
There was a subsequent memo and table sent out than what was in our packet. I have that. You and I are looking off different ones.
Via email?
No, I got it on my desk yesterday.
Everyone think that's the one I'm looking at?
Twelve, three, thirteen.
Twelve, thirteen...
At ten a.m.?
Yeah.
That's the one I got.
But...
The River Authority, the flood... No, no, no. His is...
So one director is...
He's got the old one, and so if you look at... If you look at the twelve, three, thirteen version...
We make Delgado the two-year deal and me the one-year deal, and I want to be reappointed.
Well, it says that you expire on eleven fourteen, but really, one of those should expire eleven thirteen and one should expire eleven fourteen.
Okay, I'll expire. I'll expire. I'd like to be reappointed.
Well, I would like to sit on this.
Motion and a second.
Would you make the motion, Mr. Dorton? Clear?
Sharon made a motion and I second.
But he's two and I'm one. I'm getting reappointed?
Yeah.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Show the vote six-one.
So you're sitting then for how many years?
One year?
Two years. It's a two-year term.
No, I'm... For one year. Mr. Delgado's the two-year...
Two, all expire next year.
He'll expire next year and I'll expire next year.
No, one... Okay, so yours expires eleven fifteen then?
Yeah, I'm leaving. They got a thing called term limits.
Eleven fourteen. Well, it can't be that way.
Okay, then let's appoint... Let's reappoint Mr. Delgado for a two-year term.
Mr. Mayor, I'll modify my motion. The motion is that yours, we will... New appointment for Mr. Delgado, whose term will expire eleven fifteen, reappoint you for the term that will expire eleven fourteen.
Second.
Motion and second.
Do we need a reconsideration first of the prior motion?
I think we're being inconsistent in how we're doing appointments. If we're shuffling from one seat to another on some of these, then we are changing... If one is slotted for a two-year, it should be for a two-year appointment.
He just did that.
You moved him into the two-year and moved you into the one-year. Which one is the two?
I think we went with RTC.
And I'm saying that's incorrect because you're either in for the whole term or your term runs till after you leave and there'll be a midterm appointment for those ones. That's how it reads.
I... We have the ability to change these, though, and that's what the motion is, is to make a change to these. The same thing we did with the RTC. I stepped down from my term. We appointed Sharon to my seat, and we appointed Naoma to Sharon's seat. I mean, that was... It was that easy.
So Mr. Delgado is stepping down from his seat, and the motion is to put him into a two-year term? Is that what it is then?
Yes.
Eleven of fifteen.
And me for one year.
The one-year term.
Eleven of fourteen.
That's the motion we have on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
No.
Opposed, no. Show the vote six-one. Forestry, Neighborhood Advisory Boards, any of those changes or anything?
I just have a question. And I'm sorry, I know your staff has answered this before. When does the evaluation of the NABS and their new... How they're going to be... When does that come back to us for consideration?
What's that?
Then...
Good afternoon. For the record, Kayden Smatievich, Assistant City Manager. Councilwoman Jordan, we had anticipated bringing that back to you this month. Unfortunately, as some things have been changing, as we're working through the strategic plan and some of the rollout things around there, that will potentially impact the entire Community Engagement Perspective Program, and so we anticipate bringing that back to you in early January.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, with the respect of the Western Regional Water Commission, I think there's an error on that one. I think I am our appointment and Ms. Jordan is Tom Waugh's appointment, so that... This table, so that we have clarity next year of what is what, I would move that... I'd be moved into that seat, as... That's how it's... Does that serve your recollection, Ms. Jordan? Yes?
I'm not sure.
You're on there.
Ms. Jordan's on.
But she's Tom Waugh's appointment, so she's not council's...
Remember when we had the board of that? I'm not a chief council, but I'm a Tom Waugh.
You're a Tom Waugh.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, are some of those appointments required to be done? So do we need to just approve all the others remaining the same? I think some of them were annual appointments, so I just...
I think some of them were annual appointments, so I just... My motion would be that all the other appointments remain the same.
Could we... And I'd like to make a motion, Madam Clerk, since you maintain the boards and commissions, that...
Let me finish this.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Yes, ma'am.
Could we, for clarity for next year's appointments, kind of clean it up in terms... There seems to be confusion of what slot is a one-year term, what slot is a two-year term? Which ones run co-terminus? Which ones don't run co-terminus?
Work with legal counsel on that.
Well, I think it's really the charter best this authority, I think, in the clerk.
Well, the legal authority can work with her and get it corrected.
Correct.
All right. I see we ran off the Reno High School kids real early. Oh, no, you're still here, two of them, three of them, four of them still here. Hey, what happened to this other group?
Home, you want extra credit.
Y'all get extra credit for fighting all the way. We'll sign your documents. All right, item K2.
Fred Ternier, Community Development Director. And before you tonight, or today, is a request. Essentially, the governor put a committee together on the inter-agency council on homelessness. And there's an application process that's throughout the state. And the item before you today is for the council to take action to either appoint a council member to sit on, to apply for, sitting on this board, or the city manager or his designate to sit on this board, which will address homeless issues throughout the state of Nevada and provide recommendations to the counties and to the local jurisdictions. And available for any questions, if you have any.
Good.
Mayor, I think I'm the one who brought this to staff's attention. I saw something in the newspaper about it. And I'm willing to be... Anyone can apply as a private citizen or anyone, but I'm willing to apply. But if anyone else wants to apply on behalf of this body...
Well, I was thinking about applying because I've been involved with it from the get-go.
Then by all means.
Yeah, and I just want to... Can we only... Do they only choose one from, like, this body to be on it?
The recommendation is one from this body. But again, designating someone from this body to apply for it doesn't guarantee that you'll actually get on the inter-agency board. It's just a support for...
Do you want me to make a bet that if we have the mayor apply? You want me... You're going to lay some odds?
Well, and the only reason I say that is because as... Yeah, I just... The reason I ask that is being the one that's, you know, kind of spearheading the homeless task force, if there is... If it makes sense to have the person that's going to sit on that consistently to be the one that applies for this. But I was just hoping that they would allow more than one.
You could call.
Maybe, maybe after we visit with the governor, we can get another one.
So do you want a motion from us to have the mayor apply?
If that's the desire of this board?
Yeah, I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item L1, identification of mayor and council agenda items.
Mr. Mayor, I would just reiterate my comments from earlier that having a workshop on packaged wickers in the city of Reno would certainly be something I'd like to have a presentation on.
Okay.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would like to look at cleaning up the boards and commissions. There's some stuff on here. We have a lot of boards and commissions, and I think we need to look at the relevancy of each of these. I mean, honestly, this is out of control. There's so many of them. But I mean, the Oversight Panel for School Facilities, I don't even know where we're at on that. The other thing is, I think there is some conflict of interest being on some of these boards. Whenever you have these entities asking you, you know, for funding, I think that that should be looked at. And then when you're a liaison, I mean, maybe looking at putting one of our constituents on these boards that really has the interest of, you know, what's going on. And so... Because it really takes a lot of time, and there are some of these that I just don't feel that are... Should be very relevant. So if we could maybe come back and look at that later on, of how we can sort of clean it up and make the process much more, you know, conducive to serving on these boards. Because it's a disservice to these boards also. I mean, there's a couple that I'm on, you know, at the same time, and I can never go. And I just think it's a disservice to some of these boards, so.
I'm sorry. And as part of that, there's some of these boards that I can assure you that haven't met in the last year.
Exactly.
And why do we...
Why do they exist if they're not meeting?
Exactly. So I'd like to look at the process.
So we ought to evaluate that.
And I'd like to add, for terms of efficiency, I think the county allows any member to be an alternate. So that more or less guarantees that on some of these regional ones that deal with some of the bigger issues, you know, someone's going to be there, and go down a list, and know. And I think for collegiality, the commission also has some rules for appointments. If someone has served on one for a while and someone has not served on one, they get a bump. And I think that makes for better collegiality among the members.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
The manager's office staff would be most pleased to work with the city clerk to bring back information to the council on each of the bodies. I would note that some of them are required by statute, and we may not be able to opt out of them. I would also note that some by statute or by inter-local agreement do not allow for alternates. And so we'll bring back a comprehensive report to you with all of that information so that you can make those decisions appropriately.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask, Madam Assistant City Manager, something? Is your understanding that the charter authority is to the clerk in doing this work and taking the lead on this? Or what's your recollection of how the charter reads on this?
Councilwoman Breckis, as the clerk to this elected body, which these appointments are to those boards and commissions from that elected body, the primary responsibility, it is our interpretation under the charter, does lie with the clerk. Obviously, as Councilwoman Sheevy indicated, there are a great number. I think we actually have twice as many boards and commissions that our council members are appointed to than any other city in our state right now. And so we... The manager's office would be pleased to assist the clerk with bringing back that comprehensive.
And we did look at this about three years ago, and the council couldn't come with a consensus what to eliminate or not eliminate.
We did eliminate a few, but yeah.
Yeah, we did eliminate a lot.
There were some that we weren't sure. And Cadence, I think one of the other things that would be helpful in Lynette is to also indicate... I don't think that it's clearly identified in this spreadsheet. It's really the board members, for instance, the Arts and Culture Board members themselves, how we appoint them is what was referenced here. In many cases, our role at these boards is nothing more than sitting in the audience. We have no voting rights at all. We just sit in the audience and are eyes and ears. So we should clarify if it's a voting member or just an eyes and ears liaison to the city.
If we're not a voting member, we shouldn't have to attend them.
I totally agree. Thank you for that direction, Councilwoman Zadra. We'll be sure to include that in the report.
Good. Thank you. All right. Any other items? Layers on reports. Ms. Breckis?
I have an add.
Ms. Zadra? Mr. Delgado? Mr. Dort?
Nothing, sir.
Ms. Jordan?
Nothing.
Ms. Sheevy? Reports on any conferences or professional meetings?
Oscar?
Oscar? I was able to attend the Kansas City Conference for Sheevy here. Councilwoman Sheevy, uh...
Did you have to go?
Did the swan dive?
And, you know, one thing that I took away from that conference, as well as the one in Philadelphia, is that Reno regionally is on the right track. To go back and to hear from mayors from larger cities, Minneapolis and Kansas City itself being a large city, and Philadelphia, to see that Reno is headed in a very progressive drive and direction, just something you walk away feeling good about. As we continue to work regionally with the university, with our other jurisdictions, I think, you know, being really optimistic here, we're going the right way. And so walked away with that, and also with the emphasis that we continue supporting entrepreneurs, continue supporting the tech, continue the community outreach that we've been doing as a council. With that direction, I think we're on higher grounds. But I think what's really important is us actually being present at these conferences and the networking with these other cities and seeing actually what they're doing is very important. I think sometimes we get stuck in the bowl that we live in, and it's important for us to go out there as a city and for them to hear what we're doing as well.
And also reporting on the one... Another update on the one I went to in LA. Same thing, is I think the city of Reno is going in the right direction. They gave some good criticism, constructive criticism. We're going to be getting some reports here probably in the next couple of weeks back. And then we'll bring the film, the video and everything with their comments and give them to everybody and stuff like that. That's the first time I ever had to deal with Google Map. But Google Map really helped me because they did a lot of slides. We did a video. Everybody else wished they'd have done a video when we finished. I liked the slides because you got more in-depth discussion. But everybody there was... They were great. The only one mayor that didn't show up and participate the way that she was supposed to, but the rest of them were all, whether it was their city or not, they weren't hesitant to voice their opinion. So it was a lot of fun. We'll be getting reports, and it'll probably be in the next two or three weeks, we'll get those reports and everything back.
Good. That's great.
All right.
One more thing, just really quickly. I just wanted to say, I was really looking forward to going to Kansas City, and I can't wait to work with the Coffin and Foundation. But more than anything, I wanted to say thank you to Maureen McKissick for bringing back... She brought me back all of the materials and the book, and so I was elated. And that was just really kind of her to bring it back. And so I just wanted to say thank you, Maureen.
How are your walking lessons coming? Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. That's not what I'm...
Stop!
That's not what I was supposed to ask here. I'm sorry. I was just... Or is it stair climbing? Never mind. I'm sorry. Okay. Now we'll go to item L4. I want to thank everybody for contributing. We're still about $1,500 short. I'm working with the community to come up with that. If anybody has any discretionary money, $500 or something, you could kick in. I would really appreciate it. But thanks to everybody that's helped raise the 7,500, and we will continue working with other people to do something. But if you've got another nickel you could give me, I would really appreciate it.
I have zero balance.
Motion made? Huh?
I have a zero balance. I'd love to help you out, but I have zero balance.
Zero balance, okay. Gave it all to seniors. I appreciate that myself. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a public hearing at 6 o'clock, item M1, on a special use permit. And a lot of things that I'm seeing brought up have nothing to do with the special use permit, but we will be reconvening here at the hour of 6 o'clock. And if the Reno High School students want to come see a lively meeting, come back at 6 o'clock, because that'd be real lively.
Mr. Mayor, did we want to sign the cards now? Or do you want to... While we're on a bit of a break before everybody scats?
Well, we don't have to be in session. You can sign them when they give them to you, and we'll go into recess right now.
Okay, perfect.
We'll be in recess till the hour of 6 o'clock. It's a public hearing at 6:00 PM. LD7... LDC 1400015, Southeast Connector. Request for special use permit to allow grading with fields of 10 feet or more, disturbance of a major drainage wedge, and protection significant hydraulic resources in the corporate planning area, overlay district and two variants to allow encroachment in floodway, and raise the water surface elevation in a portion of a critical flood zone one to construct the Southeast Connector regional roadway. The project extends plus or minus 3.59 miles north of the South Meadows Veterans Parkway intersection to Pembroke Drive, plus or minus 105 miles east of the intersection with McCarran Boulevard and the U240 urban transition, PUD Plan Unit Development, PF Public Facility, NOS Open Space Zone. The site has a master plan, land use designations for the unincorporated transition, Signal Family Residential, and Parks and Recreation Open Space. This item was appealed by Kimberly Rotermeier of the Upper Southeast Communities Coalition and Stephen Moloff. Madam Secretary, will you call the roll, please?
Sheevy, Breckis, Zadra, Delgado, Dort, Jordan, Kishel.
Here. Before we go, I have a disclosure on item A5, America Shell City Council Meeting, December 4th, 2013. Item A... M1, case number LDC 140015 Southeast Connector. At this time, I need to disclose to the public that my son, Robert A. Kishel Jr., has an interest in North Point Sierra Inc., which is a tenant of Petro Shopping Centers Limited Partnership and T Operating LLC, which company operates the Alamo Truck Stop located in Sparks, Nevada. The record owner of the property is HPT PSC Properties Trust. North Point operates the gaming, bar, restaurant, Super 8 motel, and the Alamo Truck Stop. TA Operating LLC operates the Gas Islands Diesel Islands store and truck repairs. Neither myself nor North Point or North Point has any interest in the real property, fuel, or other operations of TA Operating LLC. North Point pays me a promissory note dated 2000 related to stock redemption for the sale of my interest in the company. The notice is a fixed rate, and there's no fluctuation in note payments based upon gross receipts or revenues of North Point. Neither my son... Neither myself, my son, or North Point has any financial interest in the transaction being considered by the city council. Additionally, I have no facts or reason to believe that the council's consideration and voting on this matter provides any benefit or detriment to my son or North Point that is greater than that accruing to any other member of the general business profession, occupation, or group that is affecting the matter. The Nevada Commission on Ethics has issued an opinion upholding my prior disclosures relating to my son and North Point on the Southeast Connector, confirm that I can vote on the project. A copy of this opinion has been provided to the city council, city clerk, for the record. Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Proper notice was given. We received eight emails in opposition, one email in favor, and copies have been provided to council.
Okay. We have people in favor. There are four people, I think, that wish to speak, and there are 12 that do not wish to speak that are in favor. We have in opposition who do not wish to speak. No, I know that. Trying to see the number there. Count those numbers for me. These want to speak and those don't. They want to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. My name is Kim Roadmeyer, and I'm the chair of the Upper Southeast Communities Coalition, which is a registered nonprofit corporation comprised of members from all over the Truckee Meadows, which we consider stakeholders, active decision-making participants of six very active HOAs and one organized subdivision that is not an HOA. These are our working group members, and seven volunteer individuals approved by the working group who have voting power for the entire organization, and they are a board of directors. We represent thousands of individuals. Thank you for this opportunity to present our most concerning issues that we believe should lead to a denial of the SUP invariances until these issues can be answered in a comprehensive manner. It would be no hardship on RTC for this to be denied until further review is done by RTC so they can come back before this body and give answers to significant questions that are being raised. RTC is not in a time crunch as they do not have approvals from the Army Corps of Engineers to start on Phase II portion of their project and might not for some time, and have not scheduled, pending approval from the Corps, start on Phase II until spring. The coalition supplied to the city a list of just 10 of our most critical concerns that should be answered comprehensively with document support by RTC before SUPs or invariances are approved. We very much hope that you follow up with these questions. Apparently, the memo has been released, and some of the answers to the questions in the memo were inadequate. We would first like to go over one thing that is critical to everyone who bought homes in the area of this project. We had an extensive meeting the other day that included Deputy City Manager Bill Thomas, Community Development Director Fred Ternier, and Public Works Director John Flansburgh, and included, for a time, Councilwoman Zadra. At that meeting, Mr. Thomas made comments on our concerns about the master plan abandonment of the SEC by the city of Reno in 1996, which was done, by the way, at the request of the Board of Directors of the RTC, whose board had already unanimously deleted the portion between Miraloma and Pembroke. And basically, what we were told by Mr. Thomas was that when the city of Reno makes these decisions, it is our fault for believing you. He went on to compare our situation to him buying a house and then someone coming along and putting in a power pole in the easement. While I appreciate Mr. Thomas's time and the many fine things he has done for this city, and I must say, for me too, I must respectfully disagree with his comparisons as, number one, this alignment was not an easement, and the SEC was not a power pole. We have documents that show the easements associated with this road were also abandoned by the city of Reno to complete the removal process of the project between Miraloma and Pembroke from the master plan in 1998. The comparison of putting in a power pole is being just like putting in a five-mile, six-lane highway on land that is designated by the city of Reno, the city of... six-lane highway on land that is designated by the City of Reno, the City of Sparks, Washoe County, and the federal government as flood storage for the safety of the entire Truckee Meadows through land heavily contaminated with methyl mercury and arsenic, and using an adequate infrastructure to support access to this road, while I'm sure he did not mean it the way it came out. But then to compound that statement and tell the general public, us, who, by the way, did their due diligence when making their home purchases by asking about this road and believing the city council when they said it was not going to go in, that we never should have believed what you promised, and these things get changed all the time, and we should have expected that what was promised was only temporary. How can RTC make the general use permit finding B if the project is currently not in the master plan? Does not matter what the regional plan says or what the RTP says. The finding says that the project must be in substantial conformance with the master plan. By the way, makes us wonder why you approved building houses in the first place and allowing seniors to move into a community to live the retirement dream of having a home on an affordable city-owned golf course if you were only going to ruin people's lives and homes and create undue burdens on them when you decided to renege on your promise of no road and then additionally decide to put a flood project in in the exact same spot and inform them you were going to give them seven to 18 inches more of water. So, to move on, our contention is that the following findings cannot be met. General special use permit findings A, B, C, D, E, F, and G cannot be met. Special use permit for fill greater than 10 feet, findings A and B cannot be met. Special use permit for protection of significant hydrological resources, findings A, B, C, E, F, G, and H cannot be met. Variance to allow encroachment in a floodway and variance to raise water surface elevations in critical flood zone one, finding C, which states, granting the variance will not be materially detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or injures to property or improvements in the vicinity. That cannot be met. Additionally, how can you grant an SUP and a variance for a project that does not have complete right-of-way? The SUP variances are all applicable to the entire project, but RTC claims that the only area where they can't meet the no-rise criteria and need the variance is for raising the water surface elevation on a portion of critical flood zone one is on Butler Ranch. RTC does not own the Butler Ranch. Next, the Coalition maintains that there are several alternative routes that would meet the needs and not impact people and homes that are already severely impacted. Since RTC is already building a massive bridge over the Truckee River, why not utilize this time to build the Mill Street Extension, which would be a viable alternative to the five miles of road through flood storage and heavily contaminated soils? In addition, a route that RTC seems to have never considered is Glendale. This street is wide enough and could easily be restrived. The purchase and demolition of several warehouses right next to Sparks Boulevard would allow an underpass similar to the I-580 underpass built between Kitske and Virginia, and would allow an on-ramp to be built to Sparks Boulevard, RTC's preferred connection point. You could even continue through to Kleppi Lane and widen that road to Vista for additional traffic alternatives. Right there, that makes three routes to the preferred connection point of Sparks Boulevard, Mill Street, Gregg Street, and Glendale, more than adequate to handle future traffic, all for way less cost than building through land that would have to be heavily mitigated. These routes would bypass the flood storage areas and the heavily contaminated soils on the Butler Ranch North and South, and as the areas suggested are already industrial in nature, would have no environmental impacts to mitigate. How can RTC meet SUP for protection of significant hydrological resources, finding H, if there are viable alternatives to the proposed project? Next, I don't know if you've had the opportunity to Google methyl mercury or arsenic, but you really should. Most of us have, and what we have found is horrifying. We highly recommend that the labor unions Google those things, too, because they're going to be the ones that are going to be playing in this dirt. Methyl mercury is the toxic form of mercury which affects the neurological system and may be bioaccumulated. Several studies indicate that methyl mercury is linked to subtle developmental defects in children exposed in uteri, such as loss of IQ points and decreased performance in tests of language skills, memory function, and attention deficits. Methyl mercury exposure in adults has been linked to increased risk of cardiovascular disease, including heart attack. But a chemical that's just as dangerous as methyl mercury is inorganic arsenic. This arsenic is prevalent throughout the area as shown in tests done by Lennar Development in 2005 on the Butler Ranch North. Exposure to inorganic arsenic can cause various health effects, such as irritation of the stomach and intestines, decreased production of red and white blood cells, skin changes, lung irritation. There are studies that indicate that the uptake of significant amounts of inorganic arsenics can intensify the chances of cancer development, especially the chances of development of skin cancer, lung cancer, liver cancer, and lymphatic cancer. A very high exposure to inorganic arsenic can cause infertility and miscarriages with women, and it can cause skin disturbances, declined resistance to infections, heart disruptions, and brain damage with both men and women. Finally, inorganic arsenic can damage DNA. RTC's own soil characterization report and studies done in 2005 for the Butler Ranch North Lennar Development Project indicate that there are very, very high levels of arsenic on that land, and RTC wants to dig up the methyl mercury and use that dirt as fill for the SEC. There is no mention of the arsenic in their 404 permit application. RTC has indicated in their permit application that they're going to use BMP's best management practices for the control of dust during the months and months of construction. They also mentioned that if their employees need it, they will be provided with maybe a paper suit and a dust mask. Their solution to the dust problem, according to their 404 permit, which includes their stormwater pollution prevention plan, which I have here, is careful scheduling, straw rolls, and a water truck. In addition, according to your own city staff in the memorandum released this afternoon, Washoe County Health District does not consider emissions of contaminants for construction site, but focuses on controlling dust. So who's going to be monitoring the air for toxic dust? This memo goes on to state that there will be, will be, plans incorporated into the SWPPP in case it floods while they have all this toxic material dug up, but there is nothing yet in place for you to approve. This highly toxic material can be breathed in and/or be absorbed through skin contact, and their plan is to control it with scheduling, a water truck, and some straw rolls. Their workers might get paper suits and dust masks. What about the surrounding residents and school? What are our safety measures from the months of moving this toxic material around? The city has told us that RTC would not be required to do anything if winds were over 30 miles an hour. That's frankly insane. What is their plan? Should there be a flood during their lengthy construction? We fled here. Should there not be a plan to protect the surrounding communities from the toxic material being washed into their homes? They're going to dig it up and stockpile it for undetermined amounts of time, so they're going to have heavily toxic material sitting around in concentrated piles of loose dirt that could be blown around or washed away into homes and schools. By the way, one of the more coherent questions that came from the Planning Commission several weeks ago was, what did you do in regards to the methyl mercury in South Meadows during development? The answer was astounding. We didn't know about this then. I'm paraphrasing. Well, you know about it now. How can you make general SUP finding F, or SUP for protection of significant hydrological resources in particular, finding B, if these questions are not answered? Next, the fact that the City of Reno has not hired an outside independent hydrological engineering company to evaluate RTC's 404 permit application, Appendix J, and the Hydraulics Sediment Transport Modeling Methodology before you grant these SUP variances is criminal. Neither the SUP or the variances should be approved until, one, the Corps and FEMA approve the requested permits and supply approved map revisions, and, two, the City of Reno gets an independent hydrologist to evaluate RTC's modeling. The Coalition hired MBK engineers out of California who submitted in writing to the Army Corps of Engineers that RTC's modeling and other things was limited and insufficient. Example of just one of the discrepancies found is that Figure One from Appendix J of the 404 application and Figure Three from the SEC Flood Analysis Memorandum show significantly different impacts. This indicates that the 1D analysis has not been adequately calibrated to the 2D analysis and may be underestimating the impacts in the SEC Flood Analysis Memorandum. How can RTC meet general special use permit finding A if no one has studied these two projects, if these two projects are compatible? Hire an outside hydrological engineer. Have them review the data and the cumulative impacts of both projects with upstream development factored in. Show us. Because frankly, after years of, no, we are not going to build the road, you can buy your house, and we are going to build a flood project that will protect you, should be done in a few years, and we are going to, and you know that road that we were not going to build, well, we are going to build that road in the designated flood storage area, but it will be a small one, and you will hardly know it is there, and we are only going to take just a little more of the designated flood storage by letting Lennar build these 1,300 homes on 265 acres, but that's it, and since we are building the road, we have to sell half the golf course that was designed and built to hold floodwaters for your safety, and maybe we are not going to put any of that back, and we are now going to be building this massive six-lane road and digging up all this contaminated soil, but you will be fine because RTC says so. And, you know, to build that flood project, we find that since we can't protect the airport and Sparks industrial areas, since we want to protect the airport and Sparks industrial areas instead of you, we have to have your home flood more, and this new massive road will have all these culverts under them to equalize floodwaters, and since you can trust the City of Reno to keep them clean, you will be fine. So, after years of this type of treatment, don't you think that the least that should be done is an independent review of RTC's data? Again, RTC cannot meet variance finding C, which states, granting the variance will not be materially detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or injures to property or improvements in the vicinity. One last thing. I would like to ask, because I get many emails on this, and I did ask Bill and Fred and John at this meeting, what is the criteria that must be met for this body to deny? We have seen you do it on other things. We have seen you deny SUP variances for dust. We've seen you deny them for lighting, parking, noise, safety, and other things that are applicable to this project. Yet here we are, sitting next to and on the very last areas of flood storage, on heavily contaminated soil that RTC wants to move around, on federally protected wetlands, and communities that are now going to get more water during flood events, yet you have not denied a single thing in regards to this project. I had an email last year that said the city council could find that we were sitting on Chernobyl, on a Chernobyl-like superfund site, and they would still turn to staff and say, how can we mitigate that? So honestly, what does it take for you people to deny something? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for yours. I forgot to announce at the beginning of this meeting, we're going to try to conclude this by 10 o'clock tonight. If not, then I might be recommending that the council go into recess till a later time, and then we'd have to, under the new meeting law, we'd have to schedule it and repost it again, would be another week from now. Anyway, we have five people that do not wish to speak, and they're in opposition. I have nine people here.
Mr. Mayor, just a procedural question. Do we have to find that Ms. Rothermeyer is aggrieved?
Yes, you do. Yes.
Can you just come up real quick and just tell us quickly why you're aggrieved? We just have to make a finding that you're aggrieved before we can continue with the hearing.
Yes, and I overlook that.
And so just give us a quick reason as to why you're aggrieved.
So, since I applied as the Chair of the Upper Southeast Communities Coalition, in my application for the appealing, I am representing Rosewood Lakes, Roseview, Hidden Meadows, Hidden Valley. All of these areas are significantly impacted by this road, including Moore.
Is that a legal body? Registered with the county or something?
We are a registered corporation and a nonprofit with tax-exempt status.
Good. Thank you.
Based on that, Mr. Mayor, I can find that she's aggrieved, and I'd make that motion.
Okay. Second?
May I be recognized, Mr. Mayor? Mr. City Attorney, would you please tell me what standard of standing we are charged with? Is it in RMC and NRS when we hear these proceedings? I am not aware of that section.
For the record, John Shipman, Deputy City Attorney, I can pull up the section in a second, if you can give me one moment.
It's a Reno ordinance?
Yeah, the standing we have for appeals, and, so we have under, and it's under Section 1806 208, I believe. And I believe it's under B1, talking about, you have to be an aggrieved party.
Does it direct the council to findings of standard, just like we have findings of
I don't know right off, I've been looking at it right now, and I'm not seeing anything jumping out at me, but I can get back to that. I can look at it and get back to you in a second.
Do you think this is a practice, an informal practice, that we have been utilizing that is maybe not in statute or code?
I mean, it's certainly been a practice. I mean, I haven't been Deputy City Attorney for this function for very long, but it's definitely been the practice as long as I've been here, several months.
Okay, we'll let the record reflect, then, that we are taking this motion not under any guidance of code or law, but by a practice that is neither written nor formally adopted.
I'm not sure that that's the case.
Well, I'm making that in the record, and if you have any evidence, alternative, I'll take that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. We have nine people.
Do we have another appellant, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, we do. I was going to have the other appellant after the...
After public comment?
After the opposition. Well, we can go to the other appellate now. The other appellate is Mr. Stephen Moloff. And then we have 10 people that wish to speak in opposition. We have 25 people that do not wish to speak that are in favor, and one person that wishes to speak.
And just real quick, before Mr. Moloff starts, and do we need to find that he's aggrieved also, Jonathan?
Yes, at the, yes.
Quickly, can you tell us why your client or you are aggrieved for this?
Well, I can, but I can tell you that the RTC and the Butler Ranch have arrived at a set of conditions that we've agreed upon.
So are you withdrawing your appeal?
In conjunction with that, on approval of the conditions in connection with any approval of the special use permit, if that occurs, our appeal would be withdrawn.
Works for me.
I have a number of questions for Mr. Moloff related to his participation in these events.
Well, I wonder why that's relevant.
Well, I want to know how he's appearing before. Is he an applicant? Is he representing an applicant, or is he an appellant?
Stephen Moloff, for the record, representing the Bella Vista Ranch.
Yes.
The appellant.
Right, and he's a appellant.
We're an appellant.
So if you would go ahead and make your presentation.
Any questions would be more appropriate after we hear the appellant comment.
I've provided the city attorney with a proposed final conditions for the Bella Vista Ranch, LDC 1400015, RTC Southeast Connector Phase Two Special Use Permit. And I have counsel for the RTC here also. Let's go ahead and make the appearance.
Dale Ferguson for the RTC.
And we have arrived at a set of conditions, which I've provided for the city attorney, and I think there's some other copies that you have for counsel. And I think probably as a result of these conditions that we've both agreed to have attached to the special use permit, if it is granted by this council, we have resolved our issues relative to what's going on tonight on the special use permit.
You would be withdrawing your appeal, then?
I would.
Okay.
I have a number of questions about the withdrawal of his appeal.
Of who? The legal counsel or Mr. Moloff?
Mr. Moloff's appeal.
Well, I think you have to address that to both counsel, because we were having discussions as to conditions, but I don't know whether that's inappropriate.
I don't think at this point it is. I think we go through the public comment, and then we'll come back and ask questions. Any problem with that, counsel?
Just, you know, thinking it through, and maybe, and Mr. Moloff, maybe he needs to be an aggrieved party. You need to find him as an aggrieved party, and withdraw his appeal at the point in time that the conditions are actually put on the permit, if they are in fact put on the permit.
Okay.
I'd be concerned that he'd be prematurely withdrawing his appeal if those, and I wouldn't want him to.
Okay.
Does that make sense, Mr. Moloff?
Well...
Yes, it does, and I think in my presentation, I made that point, that it's withdrawn if the council decides.
Condition to put on, that's right. And then we'll bring you back later for that.
Thank you.
So I guess quickly, we do need to find that your client is aggrieved, so just, and I'm assuming it's going to be based on similar, similar to what we just heard from Ms. Rothermeyer.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, the basis of it is, when the Planning Commission approved the special use permit and sent it up to the city council and was appealed, there weren't any of the conditions that were requested by the Bella Vista Ranch addressed or placed on that particular approval. These conditions almost are, not exactly, but they're very, very close to the conditions that we wanted in the first instance at the Planning Commission level. So that's why we...
So you were aggrieved because of not...
Because they didn't place any of these conditions.
And again, Mr. Mayor, based on that, I can make the finding that he's aggrieved and make that motion.
I have a second.
Well, I have a question about his standing as an aggrieved party. Are you an aggrieved party because you're an applicant to this? Are you an aggrieved party because you're an applicant to this also, as a property owner?
No, we are the property owner that, that almost 300 acres are being taken from our property for this project, and we're the most affected of almost everybody. And so if that's not an aggrieved party, I don't know what is.
Well, but your statements down below were that you were not a party of the applicant. So are you a party of the, are you an applicant?
He's a legal counsel.
I am legal counsel for the property owner, upon which an application was filed for a special use permit on its property. And we objected because there was no conditions that addressed our concerns and impact on the Bella Vista Ranch. And now those concerns have been addressed by virtue of what we've arrived at in a discussion between the RTC council and their staff, our engineers, and the city attorney's office, and it's resolved.
So he is aggrieved, partner of it. I have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now, we have 24 people in opposition that do not wish to speak. I have 10 people that wish to speak.
Well, I'm Michael Snell. I live at 2805 Fairwood Drive in Rosewood Lakes. So I just have this brief statement. We, the public, are presented with at least three versions of flood effects from building in the floodplain. RTC, Truckee Meadows Flood Project, and Independent Hydrologist retained by the U.S. ECC Opposition Group have presented versions. Comments by CH2M Hill at the Planning Commission meeting indicate FEMA and U.S. Army Corps of Engineers have versions. The RTC version has water in Steamboat Creek choked to reduce downstream flood, but does not reflect or does not address any increase upstream in Double Diamond, as an example. The touted benefit of the downstream flood reduction includes a quarter-inch reduction in levels along McCarran Boulevard going to Vantage, or to Boynton and Longley. The Truckee Meadow Flood Project indicates a four-to-eight-inch rise. The area is not particularly specified. And we have an independent hydrologist from the other, the opposition, who has a projection of above-two-feet increase with everything combined. So why can't we have a consolidated opinion? My wife and I don't golf. We don't face the golf course, and we have no other aesthetic interest in the SEC. We don't see it. What we have is a planned retirement. We don't want FEMA raising base flood levels and costing us for insurance. Right now, we don't require insurance. And when we bought, I checked the elevation. The level's two feet above the 1995 base level that is used to require insurance. This elevation was accomplished by Phil for the 125 homes on my certificate and much of the rest of Rosewood and Roseview. Concurrent with this elevation change, the RTC and council removed the road provision from the master plan. That's a really good deal. The developer sold all his lots, and the values went up. Comes 2007, and the road is back in. Different developers, one council member, the same, Pierre Hascheff, he voted to remove the plan in 96 and voted to put it back in in 2007. Not a good situation for residents. How can you approve this variance when even the experts don't agree? So as a final note, before the tribe was presented with all the problems of the methyl mercury come floating down Truckee River to the Pyramid Lake, there was no mention of an elevation in the flood level. And the tribe said, "You guys don't mess with Steamboat Creek." So RTC took the Steamboat Creek restructuring out of it and said, "Here we go. You guys stuff this water in your pipes." Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Wayne Severs, and I'm on the board with Kimberly, who just spoke. And I'm also on the board for the Hidden Meadows Homeowners Association. And a lot of our questions that came up, she has addressed already, so I'm not going to go over the same issues that she did. One of the issues that we had from our homeowners association was the fact that there was going to be a wetland that these gentlemen had decided to put behind our pond. And we have worries that the pond could be contaminated by the mercury and arsenic based on this wetland they're building. The ground right around where they're building this has been mitigated before in the past and has failed. And I don't know if anyone's gone out there to look at it, but there are dead trees, white top, all over the place in the same spots that they're going to allegedly build this wetland. Kimberly brought up the thing about the dust. We are right up against that. From what I read from the Planning Commission, they're going to move 230,000 cubic yards of dirt out there. Not just in our area, of course, but all up through there. So again, we have these concerns about health. Is someone, is the RTC going to be there 24/7 to overlook any health problems that might come from the dust and such? Again, a safety issue, I think it was addressed, maybe not to you folks, but to us. I had a concern. I'm a biker. My friends are bikers and runners. We use Pembroke. We're worried about the traffic increase on that road. It's a very small bicycle path now. If we have FedEx trucks starting to zip past this to get to their terminal there at Pembroke and McCarran, it could be a very dangerous situation. We know that when there is a flood event, that an excavator is always staged down by Virginia Bridge. Why? Because they're pulling the debris out. I live on the east side, as do my other homeowners that are in my association. So if those plug up and Steamboat Creek starts to back up, we're going to be affected. Well, right now, we're not affected. But we could be affected if those things aren't kept clean, and we want to know who is going to be responsible for that. And if they do plug up and we get flooded, who's going to be responsible to make us We talk about noise and air pollution. Well, that's going to come with the road. And this is an area that I purchased my home, I paid a premium for my lot, based on the fact that we believed that they had been abandoned and that we wouldn't have any of this highway through there. I've given each of you a transmittal, Regional Transportation Commission letter, and on the third page, back in 1993, you will see, I think it's one, two, three, four, the fifth paragraph down is when Commissioner Bryan and Commissioner Shaw asked that they actually terminate the alignment between Miraloma Road and the Mill Street Extension, and it was approved. So the people that are now, friends of mine have had homes built in 96 and 97 based on this information, and they're wondering how they're going to get their true value from their property. Thank you.
Thank you very much. John Saloudis? I butchered your name, sir, and I apologize. Being an old East Texan, you have to forgive me.
John Saloudis. Council members, the RTC, as part of their project, proposes to elevate significant portions of the Southeast Connector Phase II by 10 to 23 feet above the current grade level. The RTC stated before the Reno Planning Commission that in case of a flood, sections of the Southeast Connector will be open and allow for the evacuation of residents from Hidden Valley and surrounding areas. Pembroke Drive and Miraloma Drive are the only roads that allow for evacuation from those areas. The RTC's project intersects these two roads 10 to 12 feet below the Southeast Connector. Council members, how are residents supposed to evacuate using the Southeast Connector when Pembroke and Miraloma are under floodwaters and the Southeast Connector is 10 to 12 feet above the floodwaters? I would like to know how that evacuation could possibly happen. It's clear that more study and engineering independent of the RTC is needed before lives are placed in jeopardy. As part of the Southeast Connector project, the RTC proposes to create conservation, a conservation easement and an endowment fund into perpetuity for future maintenance of the open spaces within the project. The conservation easement would supposedly provide protections for the open space reserved for flood volume mitigation, flood conveyance, and wetlands. These protections would be administered by a nonprofit environmental organization to provide for ongoing, long-term maintenance on the, of the open spaces. According to the RTC, the endowment fund will be governed by a nonprofit board on which the RTC would have representation. No mention has been made as to the public representation of the board, and specifically the representation and involvement on the board by the residents of so-called, and so-called stakeholders in the immediate area of the project. According to the RTC, the money to support the endowment fund is coming from RTC five funds, and the initial endowment has not yet been determined. It is my understanding that according to the, according to law, the RTC five funds are only to be used to maintain and repair existing and future streets and highways, to expand streets and highways, to reduce traffic congestion, and to maintain air quality. I see no mention about funding endowments and to maintain open spaces. I believe that the use of RTC funds is illegal under the law, and that the Reno City Council should independently investigate this further before granting the RTC special use permits and variances. Lastly, the RTC admits that there are significant areas within the project area containing methyl mercury. They propose to dig up the methyl mercury and place it under the roadway. At the recent Reno Planning Commission meeting, the RTC was asked by the chair of the commission whether this had ever been done before. The RTC simply responded that they had experts look at their plan, and they believe it should work. My research has not found any studies or previous work done on other projects nationwide that have relocated very dangerous materials, such as methyl mercury, under a roadway. Council members, this is a very dangerous precedent. The RTC, in essence, is using this project and voodoo engineering to test a theory that the residents of the Truckee Meadows are, and the residents of the Truckee Meadows are the guinea pigs. The RTC's project is like building a roadway through a minefield. Alternate routes for this roadway need to be considered to protect lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Sir?
For the record, Jerry Cruitt, C-R-U-I-T-T.
I thought that was a V. I'm sorry. I didn't read it as a U.
Members of the council, Mr. Mayor, I couldn't, I couldn't subscribe more than just for what Kim had to say tonight. I think most of what I was going to say is already been said. I would like to say that I think the RTC has done a lot of great things in this community in concert with the city. Their projects, and what they've done for transportation in this community, second to none. And I think they, they hold records throughout the country. I think this project is far beyond the scope, pardon me, with all respect, for you people to make a decision on. The city Planning Commission was not able to do that because they were short on information. Not one of you, I'm sure, has read the 700-plus pages of the application, the 404 application to the Corps. If you had read those, and I've labored through most of them, there are numerous, very serious questions still unanswered that are glazed over because it's highly technical and very confusing. RTC has done a pretty good job of explaining those things, but I have a problem with wanting to get outside help and outside guidance. That's about all I have to say. I appreciate the opportunity to express this.
We thank you for coming.
I think we can bicker a lot over this and go on forever, but I don't think this board is familiar enough with the facts to be able to adjudge this this evening.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Hello. I'm Ken Morgan. I've lived in Hidden Valley for 23 years, and I've flooded three times. And every time it happens, it's like a nightmare. I mean, we had a close call last year. I moved all my stuff out of the house, and I had to do it all by myself because the city of Reno closed all the streets and stuff so that I could get no help out there. I mean, it's, there's no way that RTC can guarantee putting a six-lane road through 12 feet high. It's not going to increase flooding? Come on, people. There's no chance it's not going to. They've got these little plans and stuff. Whoever looks at the stuff that they do? I mean, does anybody check the stuff that they do? You must not, because you probably wouldn't be agreeing with putting this road through in the first place. Last time we had the meeting and stuff, RTC said between us and the flood district, it should improve the flooding. Oh, well, all they're talking about is the flooding, and all they're going to do is raise the houses, so the water's still going to come in. They're not going to raise our garages, our sheds, or anything. All that stuff's going to get flooded. It takes like six to eight months, almost a year, to recover from a flood like that. You've got to take everything that is flooded. I mean, it's not just, it's silt, mud, septic tank floating around in the water. You've got to take and scrub each and every item for a year. You're working on that stuff. I work till two or three o'clock in the morning, and it's freezing outside. You've got to haul all your carpet out. You've got to cut it up, tear it out. You've got to cut up all your sheet rock. It is no fun. It's a nightmare that keeps happening over and over, and it's going to get worse because of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm not going to butcher your name, Rick. I always do it and done it for 30 years, so identify yourself for the record.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. City members of the city council, for the record, my name is Rick Odensky. I am a resident of Rosewood Lakes, and I actually live right on the edge of Rosewood Lakes Golf Course. And like you just heard, I'm one of those who periodically gets to take on a lot of water. You've heard our arguments, both logically and emotionally, about what we would like to do. We specifically, you know, in plain language, you're being asked to approve a special use permit that will add more dirt, fill in the flood retention area, increase the footprint of the flooding, and spread it out beyond the existing area, out probably across McCarran Boulevard, and increase areas of localized flooding. And looking at the maps and everything else, my house is one of those areas. It's going to take on additional localized flooding. In addition, the Army Corps of Engineers has proposed a plan to build flood retaining walls along the north side of the Truckee that will divert the water into the Rosewood Lakes Detention Basin with their new flood mitigation plan, intentionally flooding 958 houses that surround the golf course. Add the two projects together, and we're doomed. Okay? We don't stand a chance. And the reason we're here today is to ask you, please don't contribute to that. You are our guardians. You're the ones that protect us from being damaged when, from events that are beyond our control. If we don't have your back, or if you don't have our backs, excuse me, then we're doomed. And that's how we feel today. You know, we feel like we're hopeless and lost, and we need your support. It's an emotional appeal. It's not a logical appeal. Okay? You've been very gracious in your time, both tonight and in the meetings we've had with you during the course of the last week and a half, and we thank you for that. It's nice to know that the city council is open and amenable, and as I commented to Mr. Jordan, it's nice to see a fresh set of eyes and somebody who takes a new, hard look at things. So thank you for that. It's great to have you here. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I share, I too share a lot of the concerns of the citizens of Reno and the members, the residents of Hidden Valley. I live in Hidden Meadows, and I have a, I have a perfect view of the road from, all the way from where they're building the bridge right now and all the way through to, almost to, to Miraloma. And I've, I've been in, I've been in the meetings, you know, I've attended the meetings since the beginning of this. It's been a few years. And in the, in the, in the recent meeting about three weeks ago, I sat and I listened, and you know, with all due respect of, you know, of the RTC, they've done some great things. I didn't really feel comfortable that they had actually gone far enough to, to really address the concerns, the health concerns, the dust, the, what they're going to do with this methyl mercury. You know, sometimes I find myself wondering why I even built my house on this area. It's like I built my house on some waste site or something after we hear this, you know? It's, that land is pretty bad down there, you know? It's just, just a little ways from my house. I love my house. I love Reno. I'm a resident of Reno. I just really want everyone to think about doing this right. You know, the road isn't a bad idea. We need to do a road. We need that, you know? And I appreciate what RTC is doing. But before we go and we, we make the commitment to this, we need to really look at how we're doing this, what we're really doing with the dust, and how we're... doing this, what we're really doing with the dust, and how we're taking care of the health of our citizens before we go and we, we just jump into this and do it. I know it's been going on for a long time, but I really found myself asking the question in the last meeting, and they, they had the answers to everything, but there was really nothing to, no, no substance, nothing to back it up. It's like, yeah, we're going to move, we're going to build, we're going to put the contaminated dirt underneath the road, and we're going to, you know, we're going to, we're going to take care of it, but I just didn't feel 100% comfortable that we had really done our homework to ensure the citizens and the health of everyone, because I'm, you know, with that dust, when I'm, when I'm living out there and I'm seeing all this dust and everything, I'm really a little bit worried for myself and my family. I, I'm not real opposed to this road, you know, I'd rather not have it, but I understand progress. I just want to make sure we do this, do this thing right. And one more thing with my view, this is a personal thing, with my view, I think that we could have done a little bit better on the plans to make it look a little better. When I look at this, all I'm seeing is a freeway, you know? I, and I, you know, I guess we're going to do some mitigation, we're going to do some stuff on the, on the land, but you know, why don't we plant some trees? Why don't we do something? Why don't we, why don't we do some, why don't we do it right? Why don't we make this, this freeway attractive? Why don't we, why don't we not just stop at building, you know, making a nice method of, you know, of transportation? Let's make this thing look right. Let's do a little bit more homework before we jump into this. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Pat and Jim Moore?
Hi. I'm Pat Moore. I moved here seven years ago from Connecticut and loved living here. I thought RTC did a wonderful job because there was no traffic. I'm from an area with a lot of traffic. So for me, to alleviate traffic, I don't think we have traffic here. And if you've been almost anywhere else, you know that this town flows nicely. It really does. There's no way to get stuck in traffic here. But my biggest concern, I live right on the golf course, five of my rooms will look over this, and I hear the golfer speaking. I can hear McCarran a mile away when I'm sleeping in my bed at night, and there's no sound wall being put up. There's nothing. And why we're rushing this, I don't understand. Why can't we take the time and make sure that this isn't going to cause cancer for all of us? Or maybe some of you want to come and live in my house while it's being done, and I'll live in yours? This is a death risk that you're putting on us. Do not spread that into my home. I live right there. That is not fair. You have to protect us. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Rosemark? Rosenmark?
Mayor, City Council, Jessica Rosemark. I'm a resident of Hidden Valley, and I have concerns about the traffic studies that were done. Have not seen those. I know at the last meeting, it was reported by the traffic engineer that they had a study from 2011. McCarran has been widened since then. I never am at a light over there where I have to wait through two lights, which is not true in some parts of the city. I went to the NDOT website. NDOT has 2012 traffic data. It has traffic data for all of Washoe County, every stoplight. When I went through and looked at each of those lights that come off of McCarran there, East McCarran, they have all either decreased over the last several years in number, annual average daily traffic counts are all decreased for those, or stable, all up and down that area. I'll give you an example here on Glendale. It's McCarran Boulevard at Glendale Avenue and northbound. It was up to 36,000 in 2003, 38,000 in 2005, 35,000 in 2007, 30,000 in 2010, 31,000 in 2011, and 30,500 in 2012. If you look at it southbound, it's gone from a high of 28,000 in 2005 down to 22,500 in 2012, and that's the lowest of the last seven years. So I don't think they've done their homework on why this is needed. And I would ask that you look at the NDOT, which is outside of RTC, and see what their data says, and maybe have that reviewed as well, because there may not be a need for this road. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Rosemark?
Yes, hello. I'm Bill Rosemark, and I'm a property owner in Hidden Valley, relatively new to the area. And it's odd, when I follow the newspapers, this is my first city council meeting, but it seems to me like this RTC is out of control. I think the public got bamboozled with this initiative on the ballot last time around. I think they were misled, and because they have money available, they do things. For instance, like these bus stops in town. The bus stops are empty, the double, the double buses, they have shaded windows on them because there's three people on them. You look at the landings and the bus stops, they are way underutilized. Moana Lane widening, the demolition of all those buildings and businesses and, I mean, you know, it's fine, it works, but it was unnecessary. It was another project that was done because they had the money. That was not glaring necessity. This SEC project is another example of this. This project is not needed. I went to the planning department meeting last couple of weeks ago. You've got slick-talking engineers and attorneys there, putting out information that is dubious at best, in my opinion. The, the population projections for this city were calculated erroneously. This road is not necessary going north and south. If it's a job creation project, which some of the contractors were coming in saying, fine, I'm all for job creation projects, but there's other ways to spend money. We can repair a lot of existing roads. I oppose this project. I hope you would do the same.
Thank you very much. Shannon Wendell? There you are.
Hello. That's loud. Thank you very much. My name is Shannon Wendell. I'm the president of Hidden Valley Wild Horse Protection Fund. We have been in communication with the RTC, specifically Project Manager Garth Oxwell, for over two years in dialogue regarding the public safety and the safety of the wild horses affected by the construction related to the building of the Southeast Connector. It was agreed upon verbally for the last several years between RTC and Hidden Valley Wild Horse Protection Fund that every means possible needs to be applied to ensure that the horses continue to have access to their water, and that all fencing needs to be maintained, especially during construction, to ensure that the horses do not wander into the Phase One right now, you and our property, or any other area along the proposed highway roadway. The advancement of the construction site in a southerly direction has resulted in the removal of existing fencing that has, for the last 30-plus years, kept the wild horses that reside near Phase One sector of the Virginia Range back on the east side of the steamboat ditch. So between June and August of this year, we advised RTC multiple times as they started construction that the removal of the fencing materials around the Clean Water Bridge, which is what the first thing, one of the first things they did, will eventually encourage the horses to cross Steamboat Ditch and move into the open alfalfa fields. In June, we received the following communication via email from Garth. I apologize if there was any misunderstanding regarding what was possible on site. I don't recall promising that temporary fencing would be installed. Permanent wildlife fencing, as well as double cattle guards, are part of the project. With that said, I talked to the Kiwit, the construction company, this morning, and they are going to check on the ability to install the double cattle guards and some of the permanent fencing now. We may have to supplement some of the temporary fencing to fill in the gaps. To date, the only thing that has been done is to take out more fencing. At recent SEC stakeholder meetings, I was advised that there is nothing further the RTC will be doing regarding fencing and cattle guards because of all the contract workers that need to access the area, moving electrical wires, et cetera. I was also advised that no further considerations would be given to the wild horses along the entire proposed construction site, including fencing, cattle guards, and access to water. At Clean Water Way, a cattle guard can and should be immediately installed on the east side of the Steamboat Bridge so the horses cannot cross the bridge. Given that there is currently no construction on that side of the bridge, and I don't believe there's any further construction planned in that area, there is no reason why RTC cannot now install a cattle guard at that location. In recent weeks, one of our stallions has made his way across into that area and is grazing happily on the alfalfa. Couple of weeks later, we had seven more horses over there.
Are you wrapping up now? Your time's up.
Okay. Well, I encourage you to, if I may, I'm encouraging you to not grant the requested variances. We feel that this is not a safe road and
Okay.
that it presents a public safety
Okay.
hazard for the public as well as the horses.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. I have no other people wishing to speak in opposition. I will now go to the, excuse me. You have one? Did you turn in? I'll show you. Did you turn in?
I did, Mayor, and I did not request to speak, but I do
Well, you come on up here. You can speak anyway.
So sorry, but I'm going to need some help, so I'm really dependent here. I want to show the council.
You can put it right on that top of that thing. Somebody show us, staff? Face up, and we'll be able to show the whole thing.
Okay. My name is Judith Snell, and I reside, actually, I reside on the slough, Israels Lakes. This is a picture from my backyard. This picture was taken only midsummer when we had that very heavy rain. I don't know if any of you will recall that, but we did. We had a lot of water come down in a very brief period of time, to the point where Boynton started to rise. What I wanted to point out to you, you can see the debris floating in Boynton. All this debris in a flood situation is going to end up in the 166 flipping culverts they're talking about, which is the very reason that my home in Hidden Valley flooded in the late 80s, because the county couldn't keep the culverts clean in Hidden Valley. So as the water comes gushing through, the culvert is blocked, and the washing machines have to go over the road because they can't go under it. I just wanted to get an idea of some of the debris that ends up floating around in water, and this is minimal. This isn't much, but it's some, and it's only going to get worse. Thank you for letting me
Thank you. No, you're welcome.
Thanks for letting me come up late.
You don't worry about it. We appreciate your input.
Total opposition of this road, you guys.
Thank you very much. All right. Now I have no other opposition to speak at this time. Did you fill out a sheet? Will you come on up here then? I'm going to give you an excuse. And I'm going to give you a good three minutes. You take your time.
My name is Nancy Fitzgerald. I've been a resident of Reno for 50 years. I have lived in Hidden Valley for over 20 years. I experienced the flood in 1991. It came within 10 inches of my house. It came up whatever year that was.
97.
Oh, 97. Well, thank you. Okay. But I'm not good with dates. Anyway, I wanted to let you know how devastating it is in a flood, but that's not why I'm really here. I am here because I think, first of all, there are a bunch of fools to dig up that dirt. That stuff, I won't even touch. I mean, we don't know how lethal that is, but if you talk to any miners in Virginia City that have to be around it, they don't want to touch it, and they don't. Okay? My other concern is it's a waste of money. Why can't they stop at Mill Street? There's a small section on South McCarran between Mill Street and the skate park. It's not very far. I could walk it, and I'm an old fat lady, or a fat old lady, whatever you want to say. They just have to widen that, put in a directional thing, I don't know what they're called for where you have to go, and we can save a lot of money. After all, the ballot question that we had in the last elections asked us first to fill the, approve the, approve the streets in Reno and to look for potential sites. It didn't say, we're going to look for potential sites and then improve roads. And I say that if we stop them at Mill Street and have them figure out a way to divert the ways, we're saving a lot of money. They could fill all the potholes in Reno, including the ones on South McCarran Boulevard and including the ones on South Meadow Parkway down by Veterans Parkway. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now I'm going to close the opposition. We have 35 people that do, that are in favor of the project, do not wish to speak. I have two individuals that wish to speak. Joseph Howard?
Good evening. My name is Joseph Howard, and I'm a retired construction worker. I, I'm very excited about this project. I think it's a very positive move. I think it's a very good move for Reno. I think that if we can uncongest our surface streets and open it up a little bit, I think that new businesses will look at this. I believe this is going to run right past several industrial areas. I think that that's very, very positive for Reno. I think that the, I, the people that have spoke in front of me, I'm compassionate to a lot of their issues. I think that their issues, a lot of this will, will actually help their issues. I wouldn't be against aqueducts. I think if we look at Sacramento, I think if we look at Phoenix, I think if we look at Reno, I think if we look at the wet snows, the blue snows, the heavy snows, I think that we're going to be looking at aqueducts in the near future anyway. But I think that a lot of the mercury digging up stuff, I think that if we cover it with about 12 inches of concrete, about 80 feet wide for about, I don't know how many miles, I think that that will cure all that. I'm not an Army Corps of Engineer. Most of my projects have been studied by the Army Corps of Engineers. I spent 28 years in this town, either building new projects or doing demolition on old projects. But I think that it's a very positive move for Reno. I think that if we open up, I think new, new businesses will look at Reno, which I think will make, help Reno flourish. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trey Abney?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the record, I am Trey Abney, representing the 2,000 members of the Chamber of Commerce of Reno Sparks in northern Nevada. And we are here in strong support of moving forward with the Southeast Connector project. Just for a little history, I know all of you know this. In 2007, 2008, excuse me, the chamber and other business groups came together and put together a campaign known as RTC Five. We went to the ballot in Washoe County to support a tax increase, and it is no surprise to most of you that the chamber does not tend to support tax increases very often. This was a tax increase to index your gas taxes to the construction inflation index to pay for roads. And one of the reasons, and one of the demands frankly that the chamber had is, if we're going to increase taxes and take more money out of the private economy, take more money out of people's pockets, then we need to have a list of specific projects that we're going to pay for with those tax dollars. We thought that was the transparent, responsible way to move forward. And so the RTC provided a list of projects, including Moana Lane, Geiger Grade Roundabout, and near the top of that list, or maybe at the top, was the Southeast Connector. So I'm here to tell you tonight that the voters of this county voted to increase their taxes, and when they voted, they were told that these projects were going to be paid for with those taxes. And the Southeast Connector was the primary, one of the primary projects. It is incumbent upon you to fulfill the wishes of the voters, to keep our promise to the voters of Washoe County and complete this project. Not only did we go to that vote, we then went Not only did we go to that vote, we then went to the legislative session, had a bill pass through two houses. It was vetoed by the previous governor and was then overridden. That veto was overridden by two-thirds vote in both houses. We worked very hard on this. This is an important project. It's been on the books for a long time. If you think it's important to provide jobs in this community, you will support this project. If you think it's important that we move goods and people and facilitate commerce in this community, you'll support this project. If you think it's important for economic development, you will support this project. RTC has a lot of things going on. We have a big transit summit coming up on Friday. This is not the only piece of the puzzle for the biggest little city, for Reno revival, whatever hashtag you want to use, but this is a piece, and this is an important piece. And I urge you to keep our promise to the voters of Washoe County and support this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Having no other people to speak in favor, I'm gonna close the public comment section right now. I'm gonna ask RTC's legal counsel, would somebody explain to us what the terms you have negotiated with Butler Ranch?
Yes, Your Honor. Wrong legal counsel. Get him up here.
I'll tell you, it's just, it's hard to pick out which one you gotta go with. Yes, sir.
Yes, Your Honor. We have come up with conditions for the special use permit that we have submitted to Mr. Shipman that would address our concerns, and we would, as a result, withdraw the letter that we had.
Would you go through what those conditions are, if you expect us to add them to any motion?
I gave it to the public.
I know you gave us a copy, but I want to go through, so the public hears them.
Do you want me to just read them into the register?
Yes, if you would, please.
Number one, with the existing ranching and aggregate pit operations, A, the project shall permanently mitigate to current conditions all existing current facilities. Both delivery and tailwater affected, damaged, or removed by the construction of the project. These facilities include, but may not be limited to, one, tailwater drainage that historically drains to Steamboat Creek; two, the Steamboat Creek diversion structure east of approximately Station 100, and the supply ditch serving the northern two-thirds of the north ranch; three, the Alexander Lake diversion; B, the project shall provide for the continuance of the existing ranch access roads to Alexander Lake during and after construction of the project. Temporary closure shall not be allowed without reasonable prior notice. Material modification to the roads that significantly impact the Butler Ranch operations shall not be allowed without reasonable prior written notice. The access route shall include the following: Bella Vista Ranch Road, the aggregate pit number two access road, the South Ranch pasture access road, and Desert Way. In addition, the project shall assure adequate turning movements and site visibility equal to existing conditions for haul trucks utilizing Alexander Lake Road under the proposed overpass. C, for the duration of the construction, the project shall maintain ranch fencing for livestock security. Final fencing shall include a minimum, one, a four-wire bob fencing for the South Ranch; two, a six-foot woven wildlife fence for the Northern Ranch; D, the project shall maintain the existing water intake on Steamboat Creek or a reasonable alternative to serve the existing aggregate pit operations throughout the construction of the project; E, nothing contained herein shall require applicant to acquire additional water rights, easements, or other real property interests; F, owners shall execute an owner's affidavit and shall not contest applicant's application for issue special use permit and variance and any Army 404 application. Two, future development impact mitigation. The project shall improve the median subgrade soils and base materials for potential future intersections at the following locations: one, Station 30 plus 50 to 35 plus 50; two, Station 30, 48 plus 50 to 53 plus 50; three, Station 62 plus 50 to 67 plus 50; four, Station 110 plus 50 to 115 plus 50; five, Station 125 plus 50 to 130 plus 50. The project shall provide conduit, B, the project shall provide conduit across the improved section for potential future intersection, lighting, and signalization at the following locations: one, Station 35 plus 00; two, Station 53 plus 00; three, Station 67 plus 00; four, Station 115 plus 00; five, Station 130 plus 00. C, the project shall include the following utility extensions: one, south end of the project from South Meadows Parkway to Station 35 plus 00; A, 14-inch domestic water; B, 8-inch raw water; C, gas; D, electric television communication conduit bank; two, north end of the project from Merrilloma to Station 130 plus 00; A, 10-inch domestic water; B, gas; C, electric telephone, television, communication conduit bank; three, a 6-inch sanitary sewer; four, main shall be provided from Station 134 plus 00 to the extents of improvements on Merrilloma Drive. The Butler Ranch shall provide the planning, design, and plans for utility extensions to the approval of the City of Reno for incorporation into the project documents. All costs associated with the construction of the utilities determined to be a direct benefit and shared benefit to Butler Ranch will be considered as a pro rata fair share offset in the final right-of-way acquisition price paid by the RTC to Butler Ranch as approved by the RTC.
Mr. Mayor, I think we have one correction. At least, I heard you say, in A, of the existing ranching agreement and pit operations, all existing, I thought I heard you say, current facilities, and that should have read, all existing irrigation facilities.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Lee Gibson, RTC. Just to reiterate Mr. Ferguson's view, we came to an agreement on this, and this is acceptable to the RTC for tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, representatives of the RTC, their engineering staff and administrative staff. Yes, these are the conditions that we would like attached to the special use permit.
If these are attached, or not, if these are attached, you withdraw your appeal?
If these are attached and with any approval of the project, we withdraw our appeal. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, and thank you again, members of the RTC.
Yes.
I, this sounds like a contract between two parties. It seems highly unusual, attach this as a condition. I, I'm really, you know, it's a signed document, it's agreement, I'm really confused. I think it seems rather unusual, and I think that we have a number of procedural flaws, and this is even adding another layer to one. So I'd like to maybe go down that course of thought.
We can look at Mr. Dort.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I mean, typically, if there are conditions that don't apply, that are applicable to an SGP, we typically put them on as long as they're agreed upon by the applicant. We've done that many times throughout the years. You know, typically, our conditions are directly applicable to the SGP that is in front of us, but if we want to apply additional conditions beyond the scope of the SGP, as long as they're approved, agreed upon by the applicant, we've applied them before. And it's just the policy that we've always had.
Mr. Delgado?
Quick question. With the changes stated in the, making the amendments to the agreement just now by the appellant, would that change in any way the design of the road, being that that's down south in that critical flood plain?
For the record, Garth Oxl, project manager for the RTC. No, it would not change any of the design aspects of the roadway. Everything that was discussed is within the footprint of the roadway. Vast majority of it's actually underneath the pavement.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I have questions about the lower record at the Planning Commission level. Mr. Mollath stated several times, and applicable ordinances were 18.06-202B, 18.06-405, 18, and that's the table in there, 18.06-405C, about, applications must be signed by the property owner, initiated by the property owner, and an affidavit. And I'm wondering at this time, does Mr. Mollath, or maybe Mr. City Attorney, who's the applicant here?
The applicant's RTC, isn't it?
Yeah, for the record, Jonathan Shipman, Deputy City Attorney. The applicant is the RTC. As part of that, the Butler Ranch, as the property owner, has agreed to sign the owner's affidavit, so the stuff that was referred to at the Planning Commission meeting has now been remedied for the city council's actions. So there will be a owner's affidavit.
Okay, so you, you believe that the defects at the lower level, which Mr. Mollath pointed out and are in the record, have been cured and at this point?
Correct. And yeah, and I would concur, and I would have the applicant, or both, well.
Well, I just want to, just want to clarify. You don't believe they were defects.
No, they weren't defects, but.
Our position was that they weren't defects, that our, the application was complete. Mr. Mollath brought up these other issues.
That was his basis for appeal, correct.
Right, and now, and now they're resolved.
Correct. Mr. Mayor, if I may, I didn't know we had a position. I guess I'm just trying to understand the practice, because I have never seen, in watching hundreds of approvals come through the city, I've never seen a case come through making the claims that Mr. Mollath claimed earlier that, as a property owner, he did not sign or initiate this request. So I have those questions. In addition, I'd like to ask Mr. Mollath, since this is going through a plan unit development, a vested right document that his client has substantial rights to, is he giving up the privileges and the vesting of that plan unit development also? Because I see some over, cross, overre, inconsistencies perhaps between these conditions and what is approved in the plan unit development. I'm concerned we might be amending the plan unit development here for you.
I don't think there's an amendment of the plan unit development. That's a separate freestanding document that relates to residential development of property. This special use permit relates specifically to the construction of a public improvement, the roadway, and it has no relationship to the PUD application.
Will you be coming through to change that, or are you amending it?
I have no, I have no idea at this point in time. Obviously, the roadway may or may not impact the PUD application, but that's not at issue today, and probably won't be at issue for a substantial amount of time. Any study in that regard has not been made.
Well, I'll just point out that NRS 278A.4110 discusses the modification of an adopted plan unit development by a city or county. These look like changes to the plan unit development document that RTC staff, attorneys, council provided to us.
Who provided you with those?
He provided us with a copy of the plan unit development earlier today.
That means, that means Mr. Wicker?
Uh.
Is that Mr. Wicker you're talking about?
Yes, but the plan unit development's a component of our master plan, so he's.
Yeah, but the plan unit development has nothing to do with this application for special use permit and variance. It's a completely separate and independent document and approval.
Okay.
Your Honor, if I just may, Chris Wicker, representing the RTC, address that just briefly. The RTC's position, and I think the Planning Commission's position, was that the lack of an owner's affidavit was not a defect in the application. And by reaching this agreement we have with Butler Ranch, they've agreed to drop their appeal and not pursue judicial review. So we reached a settlement of that issue. I think also that we would agree that there was no intent or attempt to modify the PUD. The reference in my letter to the PUD was to point out prior obligations of the Butler Ranch, which RTC is performing some of those because of the need for this road, but certainly not changing the PUD as far as I can see.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, subsection E on page 85 discusses the construction of Veterans Parkway will be the responsibility of the developer. It'll consist of the improvements described in the application, which I do not have with me. I have downloaded a copy of the PUD, and they might be in there. But we'll construct, and also, the developer will construct an additional two lanes for a total of four lanes from the Village Green entry south to Alexander Lake Road. The additional two lanes will be instructed during Phase Two of the project, okay? And in the project, I think refers to the residential development. This sounds different than a constructed public right-of-way under the RTC guise. You feel that the PUD is not modified in any way by this agreement being attached to the special use permit?
I think the Butler Ranch is benefiting from the fact that the City of Reno, the City of Sparks, and Washoe County agreed that the Southeast Connector road was an important project for transportation in this community. And so instead of waiting for Butler Ranch, who knows when they will do their development, I think it's typical that if the developer's not pushing the roadway, the RTC and performance of its obligations to provide a transportation network can do the whole project itself. And under the PUD, Butler Ranch was gonna do a two-lane road and a four-lane road between Merrilloma and South Meadows Parkway. Instead, the RTC is building the entire, or hopes to build, the entire Southeast Connector, which will be six lanes. And so we've kind of overtaken the obligation of Butler Ranch, and so if and when they have their development, that's just something they won't have to build.
Well, okay. I mean, I would submit to the body that we are obligated to amend, or see whoever, request amendment to the PUD. It's a vesting tool, it's a component of our master plan, and I think it's a problem of process and procedure.
I don't think that, Mr. Dort, you had.
Yeah, I mean, the way I look at that, Mr. Mayor, is that the PUD says that Butler Ranch is responsible for the road. They've taken that and pushed that responsibility onto the purpose in acquiring the property. So I, to me, you don't have to amend the plan to do that. I mean, I'll, you know, lean on our attorneys for that answer, but you're accomplishing what the PUD set out to do. It's still their responsibility. They're selling the property to the RTC, and the road's gonna get built.
Right.
Yeah, I generally concur with that. I would just say, I mean, what these conditions really do at the end of the day is really talk about how the cost is going to be borne by the developer, you know, with the, for the direct benefit of, to him. So there's, I mean, it's really not going to the PUD as much as it's saying that in the future, when this is built, this is what he's expected to pay at that point in time, so it doesn't go to the PUD piece.
Well, Mr. Mayor, through you two staff, it says, "The roadway will consist of the improvements described in the application." So has anyone matched up those application, what the PUD, the design of the roadway and the PUD was per what's been provided with this special use permit application?
Yes.
For the record, Bill Gahl, senior civil engineer. We've checked the alignment, the general alignment of the Southeast Connector with, you know, the graphics that are in the PUD for the Veterans Parkway identified roadway. In general, they comply very well. The level of detail for the PUD is at a planning level. They don't have a specific alignment, you know, that would be tied down, that you could absolutely confirm that it's the exact same alignment. It's in general conformance with where the PUD alignment is for Veterans Parkway.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other questions right now? Mr. Dort?
Yeah, I just have some questions for the applicant. I'm not sure who they want to have answer. Just, we've had a lot of testimony tonight regarding the findings, and I'd like to have someone come up and address those findings for the applicant, because we've had some testimony that, as to why we can't make the findings, and I'd like to hear the applicant's reason as to why we can.
Mr. Mayor, again.
Mr. Mayor, again, Lee Gibson, executive director of the RTC. I'd like to introduce our staff that's here tonight. Garth Oxl is the project manager. Matt Setti from CH2M Hill. Both have a presentation, both prepared, are prepared to provide an overview of the project and answer any questions you may have with respect to the design concept and scope and what RTC is doing out there. So with, with the, with the pleasure of the council, I'd like to turn it over to Garth.
Thank you, Lee. Yes, for the record, Garth Oxl, project manager for the RTC. And what I have before you for this presentation is the same presentation that I gave to the planning commission, and it addresses exactly the request of what the findings are and then what the variances are that we are requesting. So for, just, real quick, just overall, to orient everyone of what we're talking about here, this is the southeast connector. You see the black line, South Meadows Parkway, Veterans Parkway on the south end, coming through South Butler Ranch, crossing Alexander Lake Road through North Butler Ranch, where it crosses Miraloma, through Rosewood Lakes Golf Course, where we cross Pembroke, and then through the UNR Farms, where we connect into the improvements currently under construction with phase one, that ultimately tie into the intersection of Sparks Boulevard and Greg Street. So the first item that's attached to the special use permit is allowing for fills more than 10 feet. The basis of our design very much took flood considerations into effect. We have one lane in each direction dry if a 1997 flood event were to occur, so that sets the elevation of our road. The areas you see here circled in yellow indicate where we have fills greater than 10 feet. And I'll just touch on these quickly. Here at Huffacre Narrows, we have a bridge overpass over the top of Alexander Lake Road, and that was through direct communications with Washoe County and requests that they had that no connection of the southeast connector be made to Alexander Lake Road. So we were not having an interchange or an intersection there. Then further discussion with the Butler Ranch folks is they have existing pit operations in this location and over here. That pit acts as one continuous operation, so we had to allow for vehicles to traverse underneath this bridge. That put it at 16 and a half feet above the road. That's greater than 10 feet. So these two areas here are in direct relationship to conversations by requests from Washoe County and the property owner. As we get here to Miraloma, we have fills greater than 10 feet for a couple of reasons. One is the ground is, is low in this location, so that also puts more fill there. But back here, to accommodate for flood volumes, we allow water to go on both sides of the road, so it can reach its natural floodplain, just like it does today. When that water, on the west side of the creek gets here, we have to allow that to come back together. This is a bridge. Bridges have requirements for how much freeboard is what it's called, for water to get underneath. You heard some of the public comment, talk about debris coming down the creeks and that. That's exactly what this is. The bridge is higher, so any debris that's in that area can get underneath the bridge and not clog it and cause backwater issues. That sets the elevation of the bridge in that location, which gives us greater than 10 feet of fill. As we get to these last three here, these are all within Rosewood Lakes Golf Course, and these are in, in response to requests from city of Reno staff. This is the golf course. The layout of the alignment here allows holes to remain on one side as well as the other side of the road, so they need to get maintenance equipment, as well as golf carts, back and forth in these locations right here, in order to provide access for golfers and maintenance equipment. They requested that they have eight feet of clearance for their maintenance equipment. You add in the structural section for the box culverts and then the roadway, that gets us more than the 10 feet of fill. Just to give you an idea of what we're looking at, this is at Alexander Lake Road, where we have our highest amount of fill. This is an artist rendering, looking to the west of what this bridge looks like. Again, the 16 and a half feet of fill to allow vehicles underneath, and then this opening in here to allow water to split, so the floodwater can reach its natural floodplain. As we get into the golf course area, excuse me, here's another artist rendering. And just to highlight it for you, this light gray strip right here is the roadway, and then we have some vegetated embankment fills in that location. The second item that we have is for disturbance of a major drainageway. And as I touched on briefly, we are allowing flood conveyance to occur, and we've optimized our hydraulic design and the design of the roadway, so that the water behaves much in the same way it does today. And I have a slide, a little bit, and a couple more after this, that shows you where we, how the water is affected by this, by this project here. We also have disturbance of a major drainageway for bank stabilization. There are areas of the creek that experience high erosion. We're proposing to go in and stabilize those areas, as well as in a couple of very small locations, we will be relocating the creek for just a few hundred feet, where it currently has a little oxbow underneath the roadway. We'll just move, be moving that out of the footprint. But probably most importantly is that last one there, the excavation revegetation that will be occurring. Because of the flood mitigation requirements that you have with the Reno ordinance, we're doing our flood volume mitigation between the roadway and the creek, so we will be excavating that ground down. By doing that, we allow for floodplain restoration, a creation of new wetlands, as well as habitat enhancement. We'll have an integrated weed management plan attached to that, and it will provide preservation for open space. That is the bulk of our disturbance of the major drainageway, is to, in order to comply with the flood volume ordinances, and those benefits I just listed are part of that. Here's a, another artist concept of wetlands area that we're proposing. Again, here is the roadway here. This is an approximately 60-acre wetland complex. There was previous public comment about trees. This is an area actually that we've identified, and we're working through this with the community working group. Currently, we have over 500 cottonwoods proposed for this project to be planted as part of the restoration of the overall area. The third item you have for the special use permit is the protection of significant hydraulic resources. The first item you see there has three sub-bullets, the soil management plan, revegetation, wetland mitigation plan, and the best management practices, or BMPs, as you heard. All of those items are part of the documents that were submitted to the Army Corps of Engineers back in, oh, shoot, I'm drawing a blank. Public comment is what's popping in my head, that closed in October. I believe we submitted that back in July, thank you, July of this year. Those are all part of that document submitted, they're available on our website for review. The protection of the significant hydraulic resources really comes into play there with that last item, the conservation easement, that will protect the area that we're proposing for our floodplain storage. What you see here highlighted in the green is what we have proposed as a conservation easement, so this is all protecting, protecting that significant hydraulic resource to be left as floodplain storage to help facilitate the roadway construction. All of this work that we've been doing, actually, in fact, I want to go back one to point out something here, because this was raised under public comment. The conservation easement provides multiple benefits to the project. First and foremost, it did restricts that land to prohibit any development in there. We need that flood storage for the road. By doing this conservation, it restricts anything else being built in that area, so the road will always have that mitigation requirement that is needed. Second of all, it assures compliance with the 404 Clean Water Act permit. There is a number of conditions that will come out of that 404 permit. This conservation easement will meet those. Third, we'll be able to comply with state laws as it pertains to evasive weeds, namely the white top, by providing this conservation easement. And fourth, it also allows for less storm drain infrastructure, which actually ends up being a cost savings to the project, both in construction and in long-term maintenance. We are following the low-impact development plan that city of Reno has, and allowing bile swales and the storm water off of this road to go into these, the conservation easement, where it will be absorbed by the vegetation or groundwater at higher events, it will slowly go into Steamboat Creek. That reduces storm drain infrastructure, manholes, catch basins, maintenance, all that. So there are numerous benefits to the conservation easement directly attached to the purpose for needing this roadway here. As I started to touch on earlier, we, we have done a robust, open and transparent process with this. The Resource Agency Committee that you see listed at the top there, as well as the community working group in the middle, these are all folks that we have invited to our meetings monthly. We have not held them every month, because sometimes there's just not a need to if there isn't updated information, but we've been regularly having these meetings for close to a year now. I would like to point out for the community working group that not every group listed on there attends, but they are all invited as an open meeting, and we welcome people to attend that. As well as numerous public information meetings, and then every month, we have a monthly update to the RTC board that's publicly noticed. So the variances that we have, the first variance that we've requested is allowing encroachment into a floodway. There has been a tremendous amount of coordination between the city of Reno, RTC, the Truckee River Flood Management Authority, Army Corps of Engineers, as well as FEMA. We anticipate that continuing. The discussions have been very good at this point. We're working on just developing consensus of how all of these different elements come together. So far, there's been nothing that has been raised the red flag with our process that we've developed. We fully anticipate doing a KLO Mar for this project, and then we'll continue our coordinations, not only with the Army Corps of Engineers, but with the Truckee River Flood Management Authority as well. The next item that we have for variance is this rise in critical flood zone. What's shown here, just to help orient people, this is again, South Meadows Parkway and Veterans Parkway, South Butler Ranch, Alexander Lake Road, North Butler Ranch, Miraloma, and Rosewood Lakes Golf Course up to Pembroke. What you will see here is all of the areas identified in blue or green actually show a reduction in the elevation of waters in a 1997 flood event. Therefore, we are not increasing the footprint of the floodplain at all, but we're reducing the elevation of the water in these areas in blue and green. And this, while we don't show it all the way, this green actually continues out to McCarran and out to the Truckee River. The areas you see here in yellow, peach, orange, if you will, red, are areas that were showing an increase in the water surface elevation. During design, we ran through roughly 30 different scenarios, just in this area and here, to account, to try to not have any rise east of the road. It was a tremendous amount of additional infrastructure, i.e. bridges, culverts, to allow water to get from the east side of the road to the west side of the road, and we realized that that was not an appropriate expenditure of taxpayer funds and did not meet the intent of the Reno ordinance. By allowing this increase on the east side of the road, we have a greater decrease in the floodwater elevations near schools, near homes, and near parks. If we do not have the rise here, that benefit is reduced. What I'd like to point out also is that these rises here are limited for a peak time. The flood model shows that it's roughly six to eight hours for a seven-day duration. That's the 1997 flood event. So that water rise east of the creek, within our conservation easement, is at a peak flow from, for six to eight hours, and then it comes back down. And that's over the total seven-day event. In summary, we feel we've demonstrated compliance with the special use permit and variance findings. We feel that the southeast connector is going to establish protection of the floodplain, as well as create a significant community and environmental enhancements, and all this has been developed in collaboration with community meetings, working groups, and involvement by many individuals and organizations. And that concludes our formal presentation at this point.
Thank you very much. Mr. Deutsch, you had something? Okay. Mr.?
From our staff.
Staff, you got something you want to add?
For the record, Bill Gahl, senior civil engineer. I was, had a, a small presentation, but I'm going to be very brief at this point. You've received a lot of information. You know, during the public hearing from Planning Commission, they had several of the same concerns that have been brought up by, by the residents, and we discussed most of those concerns. It's in your staff report. Staff, Planning Commission found that they could make all the findings for the special use permits and variances, and they recommended approval of the project. We responded to Ms. Rotemeyer's letter and of questions with you. You have that letter from staff and RTC, and if you feel additional comment on those, those responses need to be made, we'd be happy to answer those questions. I have Carrie Lonza and John Flansburgh from Public Works to address additional FEMA and flooding issues, and we can answer any additional questions you may have.
Okay. Mr. Delgado, you got anything on that now?
Yeah, are we going, are we going for them now?
Huh?
Shooting, we're questioning?
Yeah, yeah, question.
All right. Real quick, I know that some people have had some questions, I wanted those answered out for the public, and maybe staff can answer these, because it's directly with the city. Understanding that we've been working on the project since 1964, and there was a break in between, that was a removal from our master plan. Can you give us some background on that, and why that happened?
Yeah, the project originally was, appeared as the Tahoe Pyramid Link, and I believe it was back in the 1960s that it was originally identified. It showed up in our master plan. In 1993, RTC did additional research and revised that alignment. They had, in 1983, I apologize, 1983, this general alignment showed up in our master plan, showed up in Tahoe regional, as far as, in RTC's regional plan. In 1993, RTC, through, you know, research and stuff, has decided that, to eliminate the section of the Tahoe Pyramid Link between Miraloma and Pembroke, and instead run traffic over Miraloma to McCarron and identified the Mill Street Extension. They did that in the 93, identified that alignment. In 1995, in their master plan, they utilized that alignment in their mass, in their, in their regional transportation plan. Also at that time, too, they, a request came to the city council to remove that portion of the alignment in our master plan, and we did so, to comply with the regional transportation plan. In the future, in 2004, the 2030 master plan or regional transportation plan identified this valley alignment and the need for the southeast connector in this area. And then in the most recent regional transportation plan, they have included this specific alignment in the regional transportation plan. City is a partner to RTC in development of the regional transportation plan and supports it. They are the metropolitan planning organization for, for our area, and so the regional transportation plan is basically our primary, our master plan document. We do have a list of streets listed in our master plan. Currently, the RTC, this section of the southeast connector is not listed in that list of streets. That list is primary there for, it's a guidance document for us. When streets come in, they, we provide them with a classification, arterial collector, those types of things, for these streets when they come in, so that future development can be addressed and identified based on that classification for those streets. We identified that it was not in our, our list of streets, and we, as part of a planning case to amend the public facilities and infrastructure plan, we started to include that and add that to our list of, list of streets back in, in July of 2012. Also with that, public facilities and infrastructure plan, our changes to our fire plan, those changes have not been finalized, so we haven't brought that draft, changes to the public facilities and infrastructure plan forward for finalization. But when the, the fire facility, you know, fire plan is finalized, we will bring that forward as well, so that we can add this section of the southeast connector to our master plan.
So the, regardless of the regional transportation plan, we then, they followed and said, we don't want it, we were going to delete that between Pembroke and Miraloma. Then they brought it to city council, we in turn complied with them and took it to our voters, and we said, to our council, and we said, go ahead and delete it, which allowed for the golf course to be implemented, correct?
That is correct.
And then which allowed for homeowners to be reassured to go and purchase homes out there, correct?
They did.
According to some, for the more than stated. And so then, we're now allowing a road to come back in, though it's not in our master plan, because we're now following the regional transportation plan?
Yeah, our master plan follows the regional transportation plan. They are the, the master planning agency for transportation.
Well, if we've been working on this for so many years, why hasn't it been brought back to the council to put it on our plan? Because it seems like we're going backwards, and it seems like we're going back on a river with a lot of property that was out there.
Why it did, took this long to put it back in our master plan, I, I can't really address that. I do know it's been identified. Like I said, the, the list of, of streets back in 97 in the master plan, it was just, it was listed just straight as a list of streets. In our current plan, and the 2000, the recent master plan document, it lists that, it states that this list of streets is, is for reference purposes. It's not a complete list, and basically, we're looking at that, you know, so we use, we utilize that, you know, for future development that is adjacent to these, these roadways and access management standards.
Can you touch on the reasoning, the concerns as to why that section was deleted?
My, my understanding was that it was mainly cost for mitigating the, the wetlands and the flooding and areas, in that area that was, was out there, and they did a cost estimate, and that based back in, at that time, that the cost associated with running this southeast connector through, through that area between Miraloma and Pembroke was cost prohibitive for, for the development at that time. RTC may be able to add additional comment to that.
Okay. I was going to go into chapters about stuff, but I mean, as a master plan, if anyone has any questions regarding that, I'd like to hear.
Well, along the lines of the master plan discussion, I, I'm concerned that we could be going down the road of a nonconformity with NRS. NRS 278.0284 requires any action of a local government related to development, zoning, subdivision of the land, or capital improvements to conform to the master plan of the local government. Now, last year in December, I saw a planning commission agenda that said, you know, the planning commission was going to, staff was proposing a master plan amendment to the planning commission to put the southeast connector into the master plan, and for some reasons, that's. reasons, that's disappeared. And when we had the interlocal agreement, Ms. Hanson explained that it's still in the working stages. Your report still says it's in the working stages, and I'm concerned that as a matter of process, we're taking the development decision before the master plan decision, and that is absolutely contrary to the intent of Nevada law. So, and we have to make a finding. So, how do we do this? How, when can we expect this? You know, could we delay this and defer it for a couple months and get it to the Planning Commission? Where's the work program on that?
Thank you. Through the mayor, Fred Turner, Community Development Director, and that's, I've been with the city for about eighteen months, and that's one of the things we've looked at regarding the master plan. Basically, we have this list of roadways that we have within our master plan, which has helped us determine, say, the height of signs on streets and the level of service classifications for street levels. And again, when the regional transportation plan is updated, we always refer to the RTP because that's in conformance with the master plan, with the regional plan. And so as we update our master plan, we're going to actually change it to reflect, our transportation plan will be the regional transportation plan as amended, because through the RTC process, public process, that is amended, and that's essentially part of our master plan. It has been in the works right now. We, because of lack of resources, we've been trying to couple some of our master plan work program items together, and so we are bringing the addition of the southeast connector into the city's master plan along with changes to deconsolidation of fire, because when that occurred, we had to change our master plan, and we were also trying to add in the southeast connector at the same time. We've been dealing with some of our discussions regarding impact fees, which is kind of delayed, fire impact fees, which has kind of delayed some of that process, but that's still in our work program to get that in there.
Well, Mr. Turner, Mr. Mayor, through you to Mr. Turner. I guess, you know, I don't see the connection between fire impact fees and the master, and the street project. I mean, this is a very, and it really defies, goes against what our whole framework for planning is. You plan your roads, and then you decide if you're going to, and then it's very easy to go into the development approvals, and you're taking the development approvals before us. We've been looking for a year, I have, for a decision requesting us to decide if this is something we want to put into our master plan, and I'm afraid that approval of this would make us incredibly vulnerable on a very basic and established precept of Nevada law and conformity. So, yeah, I think we have a problem.
Any other questions right now? Do you have another question?
Yeah, I'd like, I-
Mr. Dogg, you got a couple more, and then we're going to give somebody else time.
Well, I'll share the platform, so I'll be up here all night if anyone else has anything else.
I do.
Ms. Edra?
Fred, stay there if you would please. As Ms. Roodemeyer expressed, I set a meeting up for Monday of this week that included yourself and Bill Thomas and Public Works, John Flansburgh, so that questions could be answered, and we heard her say in her presentation earlier this evening that we asked for questions to come back so that we could get those answers, that they were not adequate. So, have you had an opportunity to speak with Kim? I mean, again, we're talking a day and a half ago that the meeting was held. What, what are the areas that did, did Kim, did you express what areas you didn't feel you got adequate response to, and can you provide that information at this time?
Specifically, what Kim's concerns are because that request came down at the last minute, and actually, I believe Kim just received that email late this morning.
Late this afternoon.
Late this afternoon, that, you know, we haven't had time to sit down and talk about specifically what she may believe is lacking within that memo or not, but again, this is part of the public process, so if there's a concern that she's bringing up, we'll be happy to answer what she believes is lacking within that memo. Again, that memo was approximately ten pages in collaboration between Public Works, Community Development, and the Regional Transportation Commission.
Okay. Kim, do you want to, are there a couple of points that you can share with us?
For the record, Kim Roodemeyer, I've only had a chance to skim it because I did not get the email until late this afternoon, and then I had to come here. One thing that I did notice is that the, there was mention of the dust control measures would meet BMPs and S, what do you call those things? Yeah, the Stormwater Protection Prevention Plan and the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, the SWPPP, and I looked in the permit, and I highly recommend that you all read the 404 permit, and it's about fourteen hundred pages. But anyway, in their permit, and it says in the, in one of the answers that they're going to meet these requirements of the SWPPP and the best management practices, but in their permit, like I stated in my statement, it says that they're going to control dust through scheduling, water truck, and straw bales. That really wasn't what we wanted to hear, and we were, and that the Washoe County Health District was supposed to be involved here somehow to monitor the dust, but they don't monitor the contaminants, so their answers provide, is, have increased my questions, but I really haven't had a chance to study it completely, but I would like to do that and have an opportunity to get back to you in the future.
And I actually have your questions about the dust on my list, so we'll get there.
Thank you.
Thank you. For RTC, Garth, if it's you, Kim did identify that she thought there were at least three other routes that were preferential to this one. Can you give us some history on how, I mean, obviously, this does go back to the 60s, and some of us actually remember that. So can you give us a little bit of history there and how the resolution came, or the decision came, that this was the route to go with?
If I could get clarification, because there's, there's the three routes that were previously looked at for the different corridors moving north and south, but then tonight, there was a couple other options talked about, like Glendale and that, so I can touch on all of those, or-
Thank you, Garth, for the record, Kim Roodemeyer. The three that we were talking about that were just off the top of our heads was the Mill Street Extension, the existing Gregg Street, and to utilize Glendale as an option instead of the southeast connector.
Okay, thank you, Garth Oxel, RTC. While those all could be viable options, the problem is, is they fundamentally miss the purpose and need for the southeast connector. All of those streets that are listed are east-south roads through an industrial area. The southeast connector is a north-south arterial roadway connecting the eastern part of the Truckee Meadows with the southern part of the Truckee Meadows. Any of these improvements at Mill, Gregg, or Glendale do not move traffic north and south, and just a couple of points on that. If you drew a line east and west through our community, roughly about where the main station post office is or through the northern part of the airport, if that's your east-west line, and I-580 is a north-south line, you have thirteen regional roads in the western part of the Truckee Meadows, you have three in the eastern part. We're very underserved in the eastern part of this community for routes moving traffic north and south. In addition to that, the improvements that were also mentioned at McCarron, that's a small piece of the overall community. McCarron is a loop road that moves traffic circular throughout the Truckee Meadows. Again, the southeast connector is north and south. If you live in South Reno right now and you want to go points north, you're using I-580. I see it every morning, the backup of traffic on South Meadows Parkway and Demony Ranch Parkway, as well as in the evening, well, actually, it occurs both directions. The off-ramps at South Meadows and Demony Ranch back up at times onto the interstate, and then on the surface roads, they back up through multiple traffic signals. That is because the southern part of our community is severely underserved with north-south connection. Mill Street, Gregg, and Glendale do not match that. If you're in Sparks and you want to go points south, for all practical purposes, McCarron, Vista, and Sparks Boulevard dead end at I-80. If you want to go anywhere south, you're jumping onto I-80 to the Disgued Bowl, maybe through McCarron. Again, this provides north-south connection and a vital link over the Truckee River, which does not exist, and Mill, Gregg, and Glendale do not meet that.
Thank you, Garth. We heard from Mr. Severs that, Kim, you have something?
Thank you so much, Kim Roodemeyer. Mill, Gregg, and Glendale meet their connection point of Sparks Boulevard. So, all three of those were, if Glendale was extended and Mill Street was extended and Gregg is existing, all three of those meet their criteria of connecting to Sparks Boulevard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, can I just make a comment real quick? Mr. Mayor, we're not, we're not here to analyze a route tonight. We've got a couple of special use permits and a couple of variances in front of us.
I totally agree with you.
And the route has already been decided.
And I'm just trying to be courteous to the people to make sure they heard, even though those questions may not have been pertinent to tonight's decision, I believe that we need to give them an answer, if we can briefly, and we did.
I know, but they've also been in all of the meetings where the route has been decided. I mean, they've been there. They've been through this with us. So, the route, the route has been picked. I mean, now we've got a couple of special use permits and a couple of variances.
I'm confused right there, because I thought that the last conversation that the community had with RTC was that Phase Two is not all the way completely set, because the last discussions they had with the community. Am I wrong with that? That is still, had to go through this process of the permitting through the Army Corps of Engineers and everything else, and nothing's said in stone, so I say.
Then do it the special use permit. We've told them they have to get all the qualifications from-
The local governments have picked the route. I mean, it's, the route has been picked, it's been decided. I mean, they have to get their approvals, they have to get all of the approvals that they need to get the road built.
Environment and everything.
But, but this route has been decided upon, and it's been, I mean, it's been debated and debated and debated. I mean, so the route itself is not, that's not what we're here to talk about tonight.
And again, I know that's not part of our decision-making tonight. It is absolutely not part of this SUP process. Questions were asked in public and wanted to give them the brief description that we gave to them.
And I understand, but it really is, it really is off of the agenda.
Okay.
So-
Do you have another question?
Relating to, yes, the dust concerns, Garth. If you can speak to that, how, how that will be mitigated when the work begins, the dust concerns.
Yeah, thank you. Garth Oxel, RTC. For that question, I'd like to defer to Matt Setti with CH2M Hill to answer that question.
Thank you, Commissioners. Matt Setti with CH2M Hill, I'm the environmental manager and lead designer for the environmental components of the project. There's really three different avenues to regulate the dust control in this. One is NDEPs through their vehicles of the Stormwater Protection Plan. There is a component in there that regulates dust off of construction sites. The second is Washoe County's grading permit, dust control permit that we will be acquiring for this. That also has a regulatory function in it to, to ensure that we don't have excessive dust coming off of those, and there's all, there's, there's regulations, statutes, inspectors, all geared towards this on construction sites. And the third is your own environmental staff, which also has regulatory oversight for the implementation of stormwater protection plans on those. One of the issues that's important to recognize on the mercury element of here is this mercury has been there for a long time. As we sit out there right now, this dust comes off those fields, the ranchers till those fields, this dust is there. This project gives us the opportunity to mitigate, and we've calculated based on over three hundred soil samples out there and delineation of where the, where the historic mercury actually sits, the ability to permanently sequester over eighty-four hundred kilograms of mercury from the environment. So this is a significant remediation to, to reduce the potential environmental exposure to people in perpetuity in the future, and we're, and we've proposed to do that by taking the highly contaminated material, and, and when I say that, it's important that you guys understand that we have consulted with NDEP Bureau of Corrective Actions, and the concentrations of the materials we are talking about are not actionable levels under EPA. There are some areas that are quite high, but there is not a current remediation practice or circle action or anything of the nature being forced upon the RTC on this project. This is because this is the right thing to do, it is the appropriate thing to do, it's protective of the community and of the worker health. So we have the ability to pick this dirt up, we've identified where that dirt is, we've done extensive modeling, and there's three major documents that were published on the website on the 27th of July. One deals with the mercury methylation processes in the environment and what causes that and what the biological pathways are. One deals with soil management, how RTC is mandating the contractors to identify and manage soil within the overall project and where it gets put into the roadbed to ensure that when we get the complete project, we will have permanently sequestered this out of exposure to the environment. And then the third is really the part of the biological opinion on this that supports the 404 permit that's submitted to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to look at environmental toxological effects to receiving waters within the Truckee River. So we've done all three of those, and those documents have been out on the website since July for people's review.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Mayor. You work for RTC?
I work for CH2M Hill. CH2M Hill, we're the consulting design team.
Okay. So, you do work for RTC in a sense?
Correct.
Is RTC planning on doing an independent study on the methyl mercury?
You are.
An outside agency?
They are.
We are, we have conducted an independent study.
And you also just said that the, they were, the amounts that you found were very high in certain areas, correct?
Correct. If we can get the overhead put back up. I have a map of where the mercury containment was. What we've done over the course of the last four years, including work done by our predecessor consultant, is, is we've delineated where the mercury is. This is essentially a hot and cold map that looks at mercury concentrations through the entire course of that. The mercury is, the strongest areas of mercury are in the north portion of the South Butler Ranch and the north portion, or the mid to north portion of the North Butler Ranch, and all of these are areas that we have delineated within our construction plans to pick it up and remove it. Other areas, such as north of Pembroke, have relatively low concentrations of mercuries, far below what the EPA considers to be what they call the ecological threshold for action on those.
And have you done this before, moved this amount of soil?
Our company does this all over the world. CH2M Hill is ranked the number one environmental consulting firm in the world, and we do soil stabilization. Now, one of the, one of the charges is that this is an experiment, and the reality of that is, it's not an experiment. We know what we're doing, we have PhDs working on this. We're using the same doctors that developed these plans that did the EPA studies on the Carson River to look at the toxological effects of those mercury. The cementation process to use lime and Portland cement to permanently sequester this underneath the road has been approved and reviewed by PhD geochemists as well as geotechnical engineers. This is the appropriate and most productive means of handling this problem.
Explain exactly how you're going to handle the methyl mercury again?
We have a technology in the field that we've done a correlation study between a technology called an XRF, and that's an X-ray inflorescence. It's an scientific instrument that can detect the concentrations of soils, mercury in the soil, and we're talking about elemental mercury. It has the potential of becoming methyl, but when it's in the soil in a dry form, it's in elemental form of mercury. We will delineate that, we have done so, as you can see on this. Those areas are reflected in our construction plans. We are working with the contractors to look at what the phasing and all of the construction implementation processes are in order to adequately identify where that is, how we pick it up, and where we place it within the road fill. We have cross-sections within our road plans that shows where the mercury permanently goes below the paved sections of the road, so we don't get infiltration of water in there in the future, and the highest concentration materials are specified to be placed at an elevation above the 117 floodplain elevation, so they don't become saturated in the future.
And obviously, you are an expert in this. Give us a little background about methyl mercury.
A little background about methyl mercury. This, the mercury that we're talking about here, essentially, there was roughly ten mills that were operating in the, in the little Washoe Lake area, and over a course of about thirty years, they lost about a half a pound of mercury a day from the amalgamation process of recovering silver and gold. As they lost that, the mercury transports down the system as attached to fine particles. So one of the things that we've also done on here is looked at sediment transport elements as a function of particle size. That allows us to assess the mass loading of mercury through the system. In, in order to define where this is and the, and the issues associated with mercury and wetlands, because mercury by itself, you can go over to the Yuba, or the American River and roll over rocks, and there's pebbles of mercury just like you find in your thermometer that have been there for a hundred years because it's always been in a highly oxygenated environment. And not to get too technical on this, but when you get mercury into a- And not to get too technical on this, but when you get mercury into a reducing environment or an anaerobic, lacking oxygen, it has the potential to be methylated, meaning a methyl group, CH3 group, gets hooked to the mercury, and that allows it to be water soluble. That's the process that allows it to bioaccumulate in organisms, plant and animal tissue. So until that mercury is actually in the methylated form, it is not necessarily an acute exposure toxicity problem. But when that does occur, we need to make sure we understand that process and how that addresses. Therefore, the hydrology and the wetland development that's proposed here is really designed around not promoting methylation. Now, there was a comment earlier regarding the large wetland system in the north area and how that's a mercury sink. The reason that's not a mercury sink is that we intentionally incorporated Yuri Drain Wetlands to treat non-point source pollutions coming from the City Reno's facilities at Virginia Lake. The water that comes into those wetlands that we're constructing, which will be anaerobic, you know, wetlands, permanently wetted, is the water that feeds those is Yuri Drain Water, not Steamboat Creek Water. Yuri Drain Water has been tested and does not contain mercury. I'm not sure if I got to your question there, but.
It would help maybe if you dumb it down a little bit so that, you know, because I think you obviously have a background in this. Let's talk about the health effects.
Sure. Health effects. That'll still be Matt. I was just going to touch on the issue with putting the mercury underneath the roadway. There was statements made that it's experimental, and Matt touched on it briefly. What I'd like to point out is that an appropriate method of dealing with contaminated material is to bury it, to encapsulate it, to build something that creates a cap over the top of it. In most situations, you have an industrial site, and you're capping it with clean dirt, as it's called. That's just an industry term that's used. It's a couple of feet of material that's not contaminated to go above the contaminant so it can't get out into the environment. We're doing that. In addition, we're adding a lime cement treatment which hardens it, makes it a harder soil or harder material. So again, it can't get out into the environment. And then two, we're putting it underneath an impervious surface. We're capping it with something where groundwater, erosion, wind cannot get to that material. It's locked in place through the clean material on the side, a roadway on the top, and the lime cement treatment that's binding it all together.
All right, thanks.
With regards to the health effect, Mrs. Rodemeyer is correct. If you were going to go out and breathe a lot of this dirt, it would not be good for you, plain and simple. If you were to go out and breathe a lot of any dirt, it's not good for you. Elemental mercury can methylate in the lung. Or if you ingest it, it can methylate in your gut and become accumulatable from that method. We were working with the contractors to look at very much shortening the duration. We're not really talking about a lot of material that we're picking up. We don't expose, we're not talking about months of exposure of this material to be laid out there. Our contractors that we're working with under the C-MAR, under the procurement process here, are aware of this, aware of the public perception issues on this, which frankly, the public perception issues are greater than the acute toxicity issues that are associated with this because the likelihood that anybody would get enough dirt to even measure the mercury in their blood is extremely low. If this was a real concern, we would have NDEP Bureau of Corrective Actions and other people weighing in on this quite heavily. They have reviewed our plans. They are in agreement with our treatment methodologies.
Do you have a letter to that? Can you provide some evidence of they're in agreement?
No, they've been party to all of our, you've seen them on the stakeholders. They've met with us monthly for the last year on the development of our plans, and they've also provided comment to our 404 application.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Mr. Delgado, you have another question right now?
I do. We've touched a lot on mercury, and then I think someone had mentioned something about arsenic. Can you touch on that for us?
You know.
Has it been able to be treated the same as mercury in soil itself?
Well, arsenic is fairly ubiquitous in this system. It's not a direct human-caused pollutant out there. It doesn't necessarily have the same sort of fingerprint on the environment. Arsenic is, you know, about 10 years ago, the EPA changed the arsenic rules. And when we changed the arsenic rules, 95% of public water systems in the state of Nevada were in violation of the new rules. And that's because we live in a high arsenic area. The mountains up behind Hidden Meadows have outcrops of arsenopyrite. That's why we mine gold in Nevada. It comes out of an arsenopyrite formation. So arsenic is very common out here. It's going to be there. Our other challenges out here include boron as well, which is problematic to restoration. And we've addressed a lot of those in our restoration plans. But if you're controlling the dust, you're controlling all of the contaminants that are within that dust. And so we have the provisions within this and the regulatory by three different state, county, and city levels to regulate dust control.
Can you, I understand that when things are sitting stable, of course, wind blows and dust flies. And when it's disturbed at the rate that you guys are going to do with the movement of large quantities of soil, there's going to be more opportunity for that dust to fly. Is that not right?
Yeah.
And so.
Yeah, if you're digging in the dirt, there's an opportunity for it to fly.
Yeah. And so just wanted to touch back on the statement you made earlier that it's always blowing out there anyways and dust is flying. But of course, more dust will be flying with disturbance with the construction activity out there. What I want to touch on as well is just, someone had mentioned that employees, workers that are out there on the construction field would possibly need to wear contamination suits. Is that something that's, can you touch on that, please?
That would be at the employers directive. We are under all thresholds for OSHA contamination or exposure from any public health laws. So it would be up to the company if they wanted to do that. There's not a regulatory mechanism over the top of that.
So with the amount of mercury or any of those other elements out there, there's not a direct health effect that would possibly affect the workers out there? And you guys haven't advised, but just kind of the contractors that that's something that they would possibly need to use or wear while they're working out there?
Correct. We've advised everybody involved of the potential significant issues, just in association with any of this material, not unlike, you know, exposure to hydraulic oil or anything else that a general construction worker might come into contact with.
Okay.
Just real quick, one thing on the dust. Phase One's currently under construction. Phase One has a very large footprint for its construction, not only with what the improvements we're doing near the river, but also the borrow site we have near the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility is also a very large site where we've disturbed the soil. And through our best management practices and our Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, we have yet to have a single violation or reportable incident for dust on that project or any discharge into the creek. So it does work because of the due diligence of federal, state, and local agencies and the strict requirements that they put on the contractor to mitigate and handle those issues.
To add on to that, there isn't an environmental impact study that's required for the Southeast Connector, right?
That determination will be made by the Army Corps of Engineers, and they have not done that yet.
And with your guys' expertise in working with these types of studies, what's the difference between that and what you guys are currently doing?
There's actually very little difference in terms of the content of the data that we produced. The way the National Environmental Policy, the NEPA Act, works on this is that the federal action is the impact to waters of the U.S., of which we have 11.23 acres of permanent impacts. In exchange for that, we are mitigating for 20-something new acres of regulated wetlands and an additional 147 acres of new wetland habitat. We developed the application submittal package to the Corps of Engineers. The Corps of Engineers typically looked at this project, and unless they cannot come to agreement that we have covered all of the unknowns, we will not go into an EIS. If they come back to us through public comment period and said, "Your application did not adequately address one of these issues. We would like to see an EIS," then RTC would take that route. As it currently stands, we anticipate the Corps of Engineers producing an environmental assessment, or called an EA, for this project. And that includes, you know, coordination with Fish and Wildlife Service, State Historic Preservation Office for Historical and Cultural Resources, and the rest of the components of a 404 project.
So we would possibly be permitting a cut and fill of this, of your project, with it being changed or asked for more environmental impacts once it goes to the Army Corps of Engineers?
Correct. But it's probably important to note that none of the items that you guys are assessing as part of the special use or the variance permits are really subject to elements of the Corps of Engineers permit. We provide everything to them, but the Corps of Engineers' charge is to administer the impacts and to ensure appropriate mitigation for waters, for impacts of waters of the United States. That's the limit of the Corps of Engineers jurisdiction.
Mr. Mayor. Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. Everyone's been very, very thorough tonight, and I appreciate the thoroughness because being new, there were some questions that I had that have been primarily answered tonight. I did have one remaining question for you, and it's where you've identified the highest concentration of mercury. Can you identify for me what some surrounding developments are to the highest concentrations? How, commercial or residential?
Correct. The closest development to any substantial concentration is this is the Rosewood Lakes area, or excuse me, Heron's Landing area, Rosewood Lakes being here. This area, in this, is obviously quite a bit less than down here, but this is the closest area to any residential, roughly 1,000 feet, 1,500 feet.
And how long has that development been in existence?
This development was developed in the, I believe it was 98?
Bertha.
96? Is that when that went in? Probably 1996. We believe the mercury has been there originating in the 1870s and on up until about the turn of the century is when the main deposits come. However, it's important to note that there's still mercury within the Steamboat Creek system, and future lack of stabilization of Steamboat Creek upstream still has the potential of transporting mercury into the project area in the future. And we've addressed that concern with how we have adjusted the floodplain elevations to not pond water at times of the year that would promote methylation of that mercury.
Is there any documentation, and again, this is further away from the highest concentrations, so there might not be a closer example, but has there been any reports of there being, due to this development, where there was lots of dust and lots of construction and lots of digging, and I'm going to assume a fair amount of water? Is there any, do we have any impacts to citizens with regards to that development and its exposure to mercury?
I'm not aware of any. We've worked extensively with the work that the University of Nevada Reno has done out here, and in all of our research, I'm not aware of a human-induced problem out there.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized? With respect to the incoming decision from the, it's the Corps. Staff report, page 11, mentions that decision is expected December 2013. Do you think it'll still be in December of 2013, that decision?
We had a, we actually extended the public comment period at the request of the Upper Southeast Coalition and others to get more public comments into that. And then with the government shutdown, they further extended that, the duration of the government shutdown, to allow the Environmental Protection Agency to provide additional comment. We anticipate, technically, I would be surprised if we get it before the holiday. I do think we would get it early next year.
Okay. So, but that covers waters of the United States, correct?
Correct.
And where are those waters of the United States on this map?
Steamboat Creek itself is a water of the United States that runs. I think I got a better map here. Let's go back to. So waters of the United States encompass both open channel waters, flowing waters, anything that falls under the navigable waters provisions, as well as wetlands, both direct wetlands and isolated wetlands. In this project, we have a total of 173 designated or delineated wetlands within the project corridor area. Of those 173, we have temporary impacts, meaning construction phasing will impact approximately 13 of those acres, and we will have permanent impacts of 11.23 acres. Those include the acre, the wetlands that were constructed as part of Rosewood Lakes Golf Course, the Steamboat Creek Channel proper itself, and then because of excessive irrigation out on North Butler Ranch, there are some areas out here that are agricultural-induced wetlands that are also designated as waters of the U.S. So we are doing about mitigation of impacts to five acres of ag wetlands out in that area. The additional areas down in the south area where we're realigning a portion of the creek is also an impact of the water of the United States.
Well, it seemed like when the previous questioner, one of them, you mentioned, "Well, the wetlands don't have anything to do with the permit we're looking at here." But the areas are, the areas that are covered under this potential environmental impact statement are also the areas where you're planning cuts and fills, correct? Or, right? Or the variances? I mean, they're all, you know, can you, if you were to take me out there, would you say, "Well, this is a cut and fill, cut or fill. This is a variance, subject to the variance," and then show me, but we wouldn't be on the same ground as these lands covered by the EIS. Is that true? I mean, is it that clear cut?
Yeah, maybe I implied something I didn't intend there. What I was saying is the regulation of the impacts of the wetlands are not part of this from a Corps perspective. The areas of impacts that we're talking about here are the same maps, same everything that we've submitted to the Corps of Engineers for theirs. There are areas that you guys should be concerned with as part of the grading within a major drainage ways that are not subject to Corps of Engineers regulation, right? So, because they are only, their jurisdiction only extends to areas that have been delineated as a water of the United States. So parts, portions of the pastures that don't have wetlands on them are not subject to their jurisdiction.
Real quick, Garth Oxlott, RTC. I believe staff recognized Councilwoman Rex's question about kind of overlapping areas. And while I don't want to speak directly for staff, but one of the conditions of the SUP is that we do get the 404 permit.
That's right.
So we do have to not only meet the items in front of the council tonight, but we also have to meet everything that the 404 permit has before we could even begin to implement what the special use permit has attached to it.
Well, with that, I would like to hear from staff. Mr. Gall, in terms of the complexity of this request, it seems like we have dueling hydrologists, dueling, you know, other scientists, and then we're going to have some sort of decision made on some questions where maybe there's disagreement from the Corps. It may be in an EA, it may be in an EIS. It's a pretty complex request that you and the other folks in the CD and the Public Works Department have been dealing with, right?
It is.
It's maybe, you know, say, in the last year, it's probably one of the more complex ones, maybe the last five years, maybe?
In my experience, yes, it's one of the more complex, especially hydrology.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. I have a few other questions of a procedural nature, if I may. Now, in your staff report on page, page 11, you say that this is a project of regional significance because it is located within the 100-year flood zone and will alter a channel and then will alter wetlands. And then today, when I noticed that this project was not described in the public notice as a project of regional significance, I followed up with staff and was told it's not a project of regional significance. So I'm just trying to understand, is this a project of regional significance?
I'm going to let Claudia Hansen answer that question for you.
Claudia Hansen, Planning and Engineering Manager. The request, the development does trigger the project of regional significance review. However, what you're reviewing tonight is not the project of regional significance. You're only looking at the special use permit and variance requirements. The application for the project of regional significance is forwarded to Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency, and they conduct that review.
Okay. And that's under the codes section that says some requests can just be forwarded on to the, by the administrator, on to the Regional Planning Commission?
We submit, that's under the procedure. It's outlined in NRS and in the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan to forward that to, and I confirm this with Kim Robinson, the Director of Regional Planning today, stating that that's true, that the city does not have any authority to review the PRS, and that that would be forwarded to them for that interpretation, or for the review of that.
Well, so the confusion that I'm finding in this staff report is that you Well, so the confusion that I'm finding in this staff report is that you are calling it a project of regional significance for some trigger, triggers related to water. And so, um, when this project regional significance comes along, what, what will be the threshold, uh, for it to be a project regional significance and to be forwarded on by the administrator pursuant to that, that procedure?
Um, per Resolution 0601, um, of the Regional Planning Commission, it's, uh, subsection 1C, the project is located within the 100-year flood zone and will alter the stream channel or banks of a portion of the Truckee River, any of its tributaries, um, and will alter the wetlands delineated through the section 404 permit process.
Question for RTC staff, how many vehicles a day will this carry?
The projected traffic volumes for this are anywhere from 53,000 to 55,000, 56,000 vehicles a day. Depends on what segment of the project you're talking about.
And the speaker who brought up, uh, the traffic impact analysis, when I read our code, I see that traffic impact analysis, uh, are required, and, um, was one submitted?
Traffic, I, I'm not.
Impact analysis for developments?
I believe that would refer to adding traffic to existing roads where we are alleviating traffic off of existing roads by building additional capacity on a new alignment.
Well, let me look at.
But traffic would not have any relevance in what's before us tonight. I mean, we're looking at special use permit and variance.
Excuse me.
I mean, so the traffic would have no impact?
Um, well, I guess there's two points, and I was responding to the commoner's question, but I will, I will con, comment, uh, to the project of regional significance for a, uh, road. It says a project of regional significance is one that, uh, will have the, an effect on the region of increasing, uh, traffic by less than 6,250 trips a day. You just told me this would be about 55,000 trips a day.
Correct, and our 2035 regional.
Excuse me.
2035 regional transportation plan was approved by the Regional Planning Board here earlier this year. I believe we are still the only local government that has had their regional plan approved and found in conformance with the regional master plan. The Southeast Connector is in there.
So this is not a project of regional significance under the vehicle ADT threshold, but then we don't know because we did not propose or bring forward a traffic impact analysis with this development? Is that true?
Again, I, I would have to believe that the traffic impact analysis would not be applicable to this because it's alleviating traffic, it's not adding traffic, whereas a development which does do a traffic impact analysis would have to do that.
And again, we're not, we're not talking about the road today. With this, this, this is a special use permit and variance application. This isn't approving the road.
Well.
So you're, you're way off of the agenda.
Excuse me. Section 18.12903, projects that may require a traffic report are those that are projects of regional significance. I was just told that this is going to increase traffic by a certain amount. And so I'm just wondering and following up on the question, where is the traffic impact?
I, I believe there might be misinterpretation of what I was saying there. We are not increasing traffic. We are alleviating traffic congestion that's going to occur within our community. The building, the building of this road does not induce more people to drive. It alleviates traffic on existing regional roads.
Well, that question of inducement is really one that is outstanding, and it would be nice to see a traffic impact standing. That discusses that, but we don't have one.
Well, we have done our traffic models in an open and transparent process that's reviewed by the community. Uh, we update those every three to five years. That has been done. The Southeast Connector continues to make it into our regional transportation plan, does show a need for it. I'm not sure what additional work we could do. We could certainly provide you with our traffic models that show you the benefit that this provides to the community.
I'm just trying to understand if this is a project of regional significance, which it seems like it's been a, I, I'm, I'm having a hard time seeing a staff report that says this is a project regional significance, and then hearing, well, it isn't. And then hearing, well, yes, there is one somewhere, and it's going to be forwarded, you know, through the separate approach. When I read the regional plan, um, which is actually 278026, it says, um, will require a cha, uh, that, um, that it will require a special use permit amendment, um, of, um, traffic by not, less than 600, 6,250 trips daily. So it ties to a special use permit, and I'm talking about the 278026 definitions of a regional. So what is going up to, uh, as, what is the project regional significance that will be forwarded separately to, to the TMRPA?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, through the mayor, Fred Turnier, Community Development Director. Actually, under the resolution, uh, we're looking at C, where the project is located within the 100-year floodplain. That's a project of regional significance. Now, again, we're putting the, we put information in the staff report, um, that says that this is a project of regional significance, even though that the council's not considering that today, is still going to be forwarded on over to Regional Planning. So we put more information in there, uh, you know, that's just more of an informational item. Uh, again, what you have before you, as Councilwoman Dorch brought up, is, is for the cuts and fills and the, the variances for, uh, the floodway.
So the, do they make an application? Are we making an application? How will this project of regional significance be brought and considered in conformity with the regional plan?
This will be brought forward before Truckee Meadows. Do we have a date yet on that?
No.
And the city of Reno will be the applicant, and that will be forwarded on, depending on what action is taken tonight. Um, if it's affirmed, then that, this will be forwarded on to Regional Planning.
And how does that initiation of that project of regional significance occur? If the city of Reno is the application, does the administrator have the authority to initiate that?
The city of Reno applies for the review of any project of regional significance that comes before us. The, we forward that for review to the Regional Planning Agency, as the, the city of Reno is the applicant, and the Community Development Department is the, the department that, that forwards the application.
But it's not this special use permit that would approve these cuts and fills?
No, it's the, it's the subsection C of the resolution. So it's, it wouldn't be the cuts and fills, it would be the, um, project located within the 100-year flood zone.
Well, okay, I, I think that we are playing a different procedure than we've ever done before, frankly.
I actually think it's the same procedure we've always used with projects of regional significance.
It is, and I confirmed with the Director of the Regional Planning Agency today, and she agreed.
Same process we've always used.
That's right. Okay, Ms. Jordan, do you have anything?
No, I, I think, uh, you know, any questions that I had were in the, answered in the materials or tonight, or will be answered through the Army Corps', um, evaluation, so.
Sir, you had one comment, and then I'm on, I've cut off the public comment, but I'm going to let you get it.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. For the record, Rick Oditsky, co-chair of the, uh, Upper Southeast Community Coalition. Um, we're, I think we're still talking about taking contaminated dirt from an, an area where there is no homes and moving it into an area where there is no contaminated dirt that has homes all around it. And the statement made by the RTC's consultant was that it's going to be put in above, um, encapsulated, so it's above the 117-year floodplain. However, the RTC also makes a conflicting statement, and they say that during a peak flood period, all but the center lanes of these, uh, this road will be underwater. So how can you have it both ways? That it's above the 117 floodline, level plain, and yet it's flooded?
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may, Mr. Turnier, would you please show me 1806402C, the diagram that shows the process for projects of regional, uh, significance? I'm still stuck on that concept. If you don't have it, I have it right here.
Through the mayor, uh, I know there were just two questions that came up, uh, but uh, I'll have Claudia Hansen come on up with that, that diagram to, to take a look at that.
And, and what I'm getting at, Mr. Mayor, is the noticing requirements are different for projects of regional significance than they are for special use permits, and I've had concern that maybe the proper noticing procedure was not followed.
For the special use permit?
For a project of regional significance.
And, and we're looking at that right now, but before you tonight is not the, the project of regional significance. Tonight before you is the special use permit and the variance.
Are you saying the map?
Regional, Regional Planning will review the project of regional significance.
And what is that again?
A project of regional significance?
No, what, what is the one that's coming? Is it the master plan amendment that, that we're going to see to determine whether or not to put this road into our master plan? Is that the project of regional significance?
No, it's the resolution, uh, the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Resolution C, that this project goes through 100-year floodplain.
Okay, good, and it would, it would be directly submitted to the Regional Planning Commissioner by the administrator?
Yes.
Well, it says that application's not otherwise requiring a public hearing. This, this request is in a public hearing setting. So I, I, I interpret this, that this item is a project of regional significance, and this is the one that goes to the Regional Planning Agency, following the notice procedure.
That's your interpretation, and staff can come up with it?
And I, and I want them on record to state how they explain their interpretation, because there seems to be inconsistencies in the record.
Go ahead.
Okay, I left my regional plan over there, sorry. But the, in the regional plan, so what you have before you today are the cuts and fills. Um, I'm sorry, I left my whole packet over there.
Cut and fill, special use.
So you have your, your special use permits for the cuts and fills, disturbance of the drainage way, and, um, protection of significant hydrological resources. Um, thank you. Those are certain triggers within our special use permit requirements. Those are special use permit requirement triggers, um, that brings it forward for the public hearing process to Planning Commission, and then on appeal to you. There's a separate requirement in the, um, in state law and in the Resolution 0601 of the regional plan. Um, and it's not the traffic one that you were discussing earlier, but it is subsection 1C, where the project is located within the 100-year flood zone. Um, so that requirement is associated, it's the same project, but that requirement goes to regional planning to determine whether it's in conformance with the regional plan or not. That is not what City Council is reviewing tonight. City Council's reviewing the findings associated with the special use permit and the variance requests.
Well, when I see, when I read 1806402C, it says, "Application not otherwise requiring a public hearing shall be submitted directly to the Regional Planning Commission by the administrator." We are in a public hearing, and the, the flow chart underneath that section clearly indicates that there's initiation for an application. It goes, it's determined to be a project of regional significance by the administrator, then it falls through the process. And I'm wondering why the determination that this is not a project of regional significance was made for this one, and why it was not noticed accordingly? And you're telling me that it's, it, it is one, but it isn't. I'm not in a hearing, so, so there'll be something, I sit on the Regional Planning Board, so will I be looking for a project of regional significance related to this project in the upcoming time?
We will submit it to Regional Planning. How they choose to process it is not the city's determination. They, they will have the opportunity to review it or not review it.
And who's going to initiate that? The City Council?
The.
In a separate action than tonight?
No, it comes, it goes forward to, to Regional Planning as a, as a project of regional, uh, a PRS.
A different action than this application? Is there a separate application coming forward? Or this application?
No.
Okay, I, yeah, I, I am pointing out that I believe that we are procedurally flawed in our determination of what this request is pursuant to the regional planning framework. And so I, I think, once again, we have a procedural flaw in this, but I'd like to move on to some of the ver-